Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome. Glad you're joining us today for Sedgwick County Board of County Commission meeting. I want to welcome all those that are joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you bright, shiny faces joining us here in person today. We're glad that you're here. We want to take a moment before we get rolling just to welcome some -- you're all special, but we have some very special guests that have come here, former electeds. I see former Mayor Jeff Longwell here. Thank you, sir. I see Joy Akins, who's former USC 259 School Board member. Welcome. We're glad you're here. And of course, the legend himself, the Sheriff, Mike Hill, is here as well. We're going to hear from Mayor and the Sheriff a little later on today, but welcome. We're glad you guys are joining us this morning. We got a pretty good meeting today, a lot of significant things, a lot of appointments, a couple really special proclamations today that we're excited about. So why don't we just get to work? I'll call the meeting to order for Wednesday, January 22, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Bob Beckler, Central Community Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Well, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us today. Lord, we know that life is a gift from you, and so we value each and every day. I thank you for the city of Wichita and this county of Sedgwick County. I'm thankful for the leadership that you have brought to us. I pray, Lord, today that you would give them wisdom. I pray, Lord God, that they would dream great dreams. I pray that this would be a place that the rest of the country would look at and say, "Look what they are doing in Sedgwick County." But, Lord, we know that all of this happens because of your good hand, because everything comes from your good hand. We remember, Father, and we declare today, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. On pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Pastor Bob. Thank you, sir, Central Community Church. We love you guys. We appreciate all that you do for the community. Thanks for being here this morning, sir. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh. Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner -- Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Stephanie.
Good, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Stephanie Birmingham from Strategic Communications. As we continue to climb out of the deep freeze again from our third winter blast so far this year, Lynn Packer, Director of Public Works, is here to give us an overview of what his crews tackled in the first two snowstorms. Lynn.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For the record, Lynn Packer, County Engineer and your Director of Public Works. So before I talk about the snow removal, I did get an update from our 2024 totals, and I thought it was interesting, and then I would let you know that last year in support of Public Works, our vehicles and equipment drove just under 1 million miles within the county limits alone throughout the year, and spent about just over 33,000 hours in our equipment and our vehicles getting work done for Public Works on our miles, which just lets you know that the time and effort we do put in out on the county roads. We did have a -- I can't say it's unprecedented, but it has been quite some time that our winter season, storm season, has started out like it did a couple weeks ago, and with the two storms and the temperature staying on the ground, keeping the snow on the ground as long as it has. And we were out for six and a half days. We had one shift, overnight shift, that we took off on Wednesday. Otherwise, 24 hours a day, we had our operators, as did Kedon and the city of Wichita, and all the cities had their operators running. Our costs for those operations was $151,000 in the labor costs and overhead. We had $122,000 in vehicle costs, which includes our mileage, fuel, and fleet overhead. And we used $136,000 in materials, salt, sand, and our brand mix. We had -- that's a total of about $410,000 that was spent. 60 to 63 employees were actively engaged in snow removal operations on a daily basis. We had, as we talked about and we mentioned, two 12-hour shifts operating between January 4th through January 10th. That ended up being 135 total hours of operations, 590 equipment hours, and just that time, just those weeks, those six days, we spent almost seven days. We spent over 35,000 miles driven to clear those roads. I think they did an excellent job getting out there and tackling this event. I think all the cities and the counties in this area did a outstanding job, and it's been a long time since we have done more than a three-day run with these operations. In fact, it's been almost 15 years since we've run more than a three-day operation. So to start off the winter storm series with a seven-day operation, they were very happy to have the weekend off that coming.
Yeah.
Once the 10th came to us. But we're already geared up. Most of our supply has been replenished, and we're ready for whatever Mother Nature throws us next time.
Lynn, thank you so much. Please make sure that your staff knows and understands just how much we appreciate -- all the people of Sedgwick County appreciates the work that they did. That data is rather profound, to think about the number of miles that were traveled in the last year, the dollars that have been invested, the time. And we all know how cold it was, and how frigid it was, and to deal with a layer of ice over the snow, it's rather significant. So please let them know, we know how hard they worked, how long they worked. Please tell your staff that we're deeply grateful for their commitment. And it wasn't just about cleaning roads. This was a public safety issue. This was making sure roads were passables, where people could be as safe as possible. So please extend our thanks.
I will definitely do that. One of the things we tell our employees, especially when we're doing our snow training, you know, we work when nobody else can. And that's just part of what we do, and we do it every year, in and out. Thank you.
Yep. Commissioners, any questions or comments for Lynn? Okay, seeing none. Thanks again, Lynn. Appreciate it.
Just a reminder, you have one more day left until tomorrow, January 23, to turn your real Christmas tree into mulch. We do ask that you please take off the decorations, the lights, and tree stand. You wouldn't think you'd have to say that, but please take that off before dropping the tree off at any of our 22 locations around Sedgwick County. Many Sedgwick County residents could qualify for a property tax refund through the Homestead rebate program, and our county clerk's office is ready to help folks apply. Kelly Arnold is here this morning to tell us more about that.
Good morning, Kelly. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, Kelly Arnold, Sedgwick County Clerk here. It is that time of year that the citizens that are able to qualify can come to our office, and we will assist them with preparing their homestead tax refund. We actually have three different programs that they could potentially qualify for one of those. Our office is able to help them deciding which will be best for them. Also, while I'm up here, I want to just introduce Kathy. She's our office manager. Her and her staff are the ones that work every day with our citizens to make sure that paperwork and everything is done properly and filed, and help track that money to make sure they get that money back when it is. I have worked with Communications to put together a video that we are using to help promote this and to get this information out to the public so that they know that this is available, and I'd like to play that video.
Tax season is here, and if you're a senior, veteran, low-income, or disabled homeowner, you might qualify for a significant property tax refund. Under the state's Homestead Refund Program, Kansas residents who owned a home last year and meet the age and income requirements and other criteria could be refunded some, most, or almost all of their property taxes paid last year. The Sedgwick County Clerk's Office can help you to determine which of three rebates you might qualify for and to fill out the needed forms. Just call our staff at 316-660-9221 to discuss your situation and the documents you'll need. By April 15, bring those papers to the clerk's office on the sixth floor of the Ruffin Building in downtown Wichita, any weekday except holidays, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. No appointment is needed, and the help is free. Learn more about Homestead refunds on the Sedgwick County website under the Clerk's tab. Let us help you get the refund you deserve.
So I just again want to highlight, we have three different programs. There's a lot of information in here, so I'm only going to kind of just state what it is, and you can call us, and we're more than happy to help figure out what works best for you. But we have this Homestead program, which you must be 55 years or older, or you have a dependent with you, or somebody that's permanently disabled or blind, makes an income of less than $42,000 per year. We have the Safe Seniors, if you're 65 and over, with also income limits, we can help you. And then the other one is rather new, which is the Senior and Disabled Veterans Property Tax. And so if you're a disabled veteran, give us a call, and we'll see what we can do to help with you as well. We do have a dedicated phone line, which is that number that was shown, is 660-9221. That is a phone line just for homesteads with a lot more information, and then you'll be able to talk to a live person. You can also go to our website. There's no appointment needed. Just come on down, and we will be happy to help take care of you. So that's it.
Good information, Kelly, those three programs. Commissioners, any questions or comments? One point of clarity, Kelly, if you don't mind, the Homestead, if approved for one of these three refunds, it goes towards their mid-year tax payment, their end-year tax payment, just what credit they put on their statement? Can you clarify that for the public?
They do get a check back in the mail.
They get a check back, okay.
It depends on how they -- they can choose how they want it back. So we can send it directly to the Treasurer's Office for them to pay their taxes, or they can get it directly deposited into their checking account, or they can get a check sent to their house.
Yeah. Do you guys know how many people were able to utilize this program last year?
285.
Okay. So hopefully we can increase that number.
Yeah, we have 52 so far this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a lot of opportunity to get this to the public, to let them know and get more people on that.
I would just say that the rise in property tax dollars throughout the community has disproportionately burdened some of those that are in our senior fixed incomes. So these programs can really help. So whatever we can do from the comms angle, whatever we can do publicly to make sure people know that the deadline is April 15, and to try to get this information out, I think it'd be helpful for the community.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that's it for county announcements, unless you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Stephanie?
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Okay, public agenda. It looks like we did have a few people signed up. They are mostly signed up for the proclamations that will be coming. If you'd like, we can just wait. I think some of you are actually speaking on behalf of the proclamation, so we can just wait for each proclamation, and then we welcome those. I see Van, you're on here as well. Welcome you to speak when the proclamation is up. That way, we can kind of keep things targeted. So if that's okay, then we'll just go that route and move forward.
That's what I'm saying.
Nobody else, just everything's signed up for the proclamation, so. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of January 8, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, we are all present on the January 8 meeting. Any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 8, 2025.
Second.
Okay, a motion of second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring National Mentoring Month.
Okay, wonderful proclamation here. Of Sedgwick County, Kansas, whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to celebrate the powerful impact of mentoring relationships, to recruit new mentors, and to encourage institutions to promote and integrate quality mentorship. And whereas, Sedgwick County government recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people and strengthen our community, and whereas, youth development experts agree that mentoring encourages positive youth development, such as completing homework, making healthy social interactions, and learning life skills. Research shows that mentoring programs generally have a positive impact on academics, school engagement, and overall educational outcomes, improving student attendance, grades, and test scores. And whereas, mentors help young people set career goals, train for jobs, and connect with local industry professionals. Young people with a mentor are more likely to enroll in college or a technical school, participate in sports or extracurricular activities, hold a leadership position in a club or sports team, volunteer regularly, and are less likely to use drugs. And whereas, despite the benefits of mentoring, one in three young people grow up with a mentor, which means without someone outside the home to offer them guidance, support, and resources, this void creates a mentorship gap that demonstrates the need for collaboration among the private, public, and nonprofit sectors to increase resources for youth in our communities, schools, and workplaces. Now therefore be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 2025 as National Mentoring Month. We declare it in Sedgwick County with the optimism that Sedgwick County residents will open their hearts, explore options for serving youth, and answer the call to become a mentor for a child in our community. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. I move to approve it as read.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh. Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation is my friend, Robert Garner. He's the CEO of Youth Horizons.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Beatty. I'll be brief, and other fellow Commissioners, yes, good morning. We are just so happy to be bringing extreme awareness to January's National Awareness Month for Mentoring. Youth Horizons is a homegrown agency, it's a faith-based organization, whose services have spanned three decades. I know firsthand the impact of mentoring because I was also a protege, and I actually saw the benefits of mentoring as I served as an administrator for the Wichita Public Schools for a few decades. This is an opportunity for Youth Horizons to bring attention and promote mentoring, to raise the awareness for the need of mentors. As Chairman Beatty said, there are so many benefits to mentoring. Most profoundly to me is the impact that mentors have on social, emotional health, and also academic success. And as Chairman Beatty mentioned, several data points. Here are a few others. 85% of the mentors say their -- the mentees say that their mentor specifically spent quality time with them with their educational matters. Most profound to me is the fact that mentors support the mental health of those proteges, and 58% of those youth attested to that. There is a need. Pastor Bob with Central Community Church, I think he just left, but he's another advocate for mentoring, as his church is very supportive of mentoring. So thank you for this opportunity. Alongside me is our Vice Chair, Joy Akins.
Thank you, Robert. Good morning, Joy.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's great to see you this morning. Thank you for taking a moment to think about the faithful investments that we make in other people and the impact that they have for decades. I shared this story yesterday with City Council, but most of you know Joy today, the Joy that runs a successful tech company that serves CEOs around the country and is a little bit of a CEO whisperer at times, and helps them think with fresh vision about their data. But what you don't know is the little girl Joy, who felt powerless and afraid in her home. And what you don't know is that there were 80 mentors in my life, in all the houses we lived in, the places we moved, the schools that I attended, the churches I went to, who saw some kind of potential in me, and they spent time with me. When I was 32 years old, I was in a class where they asked us to think about events in our life and the people who'd impacted us, and when I finished, my list had the names of over 80 people. And that doesn't count just the people who were kind to me as I was growing up, but those are people who actually spent an hour a week or 30 minutes a day, something along the way, because they saw potential. So the joy you see today has a story of mentoring too, like many of you probably do, and that's why it's so important that we look for ways to invest in the children among us. We have a lot of fragile children. I know, Commissioner Beatty, that's important to you. I've heard you speak about it and share with Youth Horizons. And Commissioner Howell, you've been a mentor, and you've supported Youth Horizons for just longer than I've known you, and I see you at the Sunrun lots of years. So I know that you're passionate about that, both of you, and so thank you for your passion in that, because you're helping raise other children like Joy who would possibly not be where they are today. So thank you for your investment.
Powerful testimony. Hang tight. Couple things, we want some comments from Commissioners. We also have some people with public comment. I want to bring it a little out of order today, people that wanted to speak specifically about your organization. So Commissioners, if we want to wait for a few people, then we'll have some comments. A few people that would want to speak on this proclamation, particularly Van Williams, if you'd like to share.
I appreciate the opportunity, but let me first say I'm glad to be back at my former work home. I'm the former Director of Strategic Communications. It's always good to come back. Obviously, Joy and Robert talked about the impact of mentoring. I just want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to raise awareness about it in January and help us enhance partnerships around mentoring. It just so happens that Robert and I are leaving this meeting and going to somewhat of a mentoring summit across the street at the Kansas Leadership Center. So it's a great month to get people unified around mentoring, and thank you for the opportunity to come down and share.
Yeah, very good. Okay. We also had Rachel, I believe you'd signed up. I'm sorry, I can't read your last name if you'd like to speak on the proclamation with this.
Rachel is our camera person.
Oh, there she is.
She's over here, she's speaking.
Very good.
I haven't been here in recent years. May have been my fault. I think I signed the wrong form.
It's all good.
But she didn't want to speak.
Are you sure? We can let her. Hang tight here. We had Commissioner comments. Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the chance to speak on this, and I just want to say the one year I had -- was able to be chairman, as you saw last week, the Chairman's Award goes out to some organization, and I had the honor distinctly to honor Youth Horizons for their mentorship program specifically. And Ernest Alexander was here, God bless him, and his ministry to our community. Robert, I'm so glad that you have this responsibility now to carry on that baton and that torch for this community. And mentoring is a -- is really the thing that we were missing, I think, decades ago when I was a troubled youth. We didn't have things like that, and by the grace of God, I didn't end up in some bad situation, but I'm so glad that kids today, many of them, do have opportunities to have a mentor. We need more mentors, and so these programs that create intentional relationships for someone who is trying to show love and structure to someone who doesn't have those things is imperative, and it changes the life of these kids. As Joy mentioned, I've been involved in Youth Horizons a different -- number of different ways. One of the ones our family loved so much, we had a -- one of the mentees, if you will, was a great part of our family, and he spent Sunday lunch with us after church, and it was just a great time to get to know that young man, and he's grown up, and he's an adult now, and I think doing very well. But thinking back about how my kids have actually worked at Youth Horizons as in their residential, the Kinlock Boys Ranch, as well as been mentors, many of my kids have been mentors to other kids. We've had them over to the house, and so our family's been impacted in numerous ways. And I just want to say, I love the program, I love what you do. If it wasn't for Youth Horizons and other organizations like it, our community would be so much worse. We have a great opportunity, great promise, great hope because of the work that you guys do. Just want to say thank you for what you do. I can't tell you how much I am pleased that you guys are continuing on this great mission, and our kids are the benefactor. So thank you for what you do. I just want to share that with Chairman, and give my appreciation to all three of you especially, and all the folks that you work with, and especially the mentors of our community.
Yeah. Very good, Commissioner. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate what you guys are doing. Joy, thanks for sharing your personal story, Van. Appreciate you being here to support it. Something I feel is very important, because when I was young, I needed someone to reach out to me and tell me about opportunities you could take and pathways you could take. And I always try to pride myself in at least having lunch or a meeting once a week with a young person. Yesterday, I had two. There's just so many people that are in college or preparing to go to college, and they just -- you just don't have a good grasp as to what opportunities are out there. So I appreciate you guys being ambassadors and everybody out there to reach out to as many young people as you can, and try to point them in a direction that maybe they've never thought of before. So thanks again.
Very good. Well, I want to thank you for being here and for this proclamation, and more importantly, for what you guys do in this community. I had the honor of then seeing your event this year in December, and it was an honor because you step into spaces and fill gaps that are desperately needed in this community. As some people know, and you've probably heard it from this platform many times, there's 1,400 kids in Sedgwick County that are in the foster care system, only have about 650 homes. The outcomes, if you look at the data, the outcomes, you know, 70% of kids attached to foster care system at four placements, growing up in the criminal justice system. Only 40% are going to graduate high school. One out of four will end up homeless within two years of aging out of the system. Yet you stand in the gap, and you stand in the gap in a way with principle. I know the things you teach, I know the accountability you bring in, and I know the grace and the love that envelops all of that. So you're one of my favorite organizations in the entire community because of what you do and why you do it, and I just want you to know how much we appreciate you and the work that you do, so. Robert, if you wouldn't mind, we got another proclamation, and we want to celebrate both by just getting some pictures right afterwards, if that's okay. Just hang out about five more minutes, 10 minutes, and we'll go from there. Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland Council 100th Anniversary.
Okay, very good. We've asked Commissioner Stephanie Wise to read this proclamation.
Thank you. I'm reading this proclamation, whereas January 31, 2025 marks the 100th anniversary of the formation of the Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland Council, which began in 1925 when Girl Scouts of the United States of America awarded the first council charter in Wichita, Kansas. And whereas, throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland, in conjunction with the legacy councils, has inspired thousands of Kansas girls and women to thrive for the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas, to kick off the 100th anniversary celebration, girls and adults across Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland performed 100 acts of service to benefit multiple organizations and communities in Sedgwick County and across Kansas. And whereas, Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland is committed to offering membership and quality programs on a year-round basis to girls in all racial, ethnic, cultural, religious, and socioeconomic groups. And whereas, in its second century of service, Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland is continuing a legacy of providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making Sedgwick County the state of Kansas, this country, and the world a better place. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Beatty K -- Chairman Beatty K -- Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the year 2025 as Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland Council 100th Anniversary in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance through 2025. I move to make a motion to accept and approve this proclamation.
Yes. And I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And to accept this proclamation is Rolinda Sample, CEO of Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland.
Yes. Good morning. Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you so much for recognizing Girl Scouts. We are very proud to have served in our communities and across the county and our 80 counties that we serve as Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland for this 100th. that we serve as Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland for this 100 years, and we look forward to the next 100. You talked a little bit about the Acts of Kindness. We did actually more than 140 Acts of Kindness during the month of November, and that involved over 1,500 individuals. So that is, these acts are giving back to nonprofit organizations and others in the community who may not have as much as we do. So thank you for that. We also shared some cookies with you, and it's more than just cookies. It is where the girls are learning skills, such as business ethics, that all of you as leaders also take into consideration. Budgeting, goal setting, all of those same things that we do as adults and leaders throughout the county. So thank you very much.
Yeah, very good. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Blue Ball.
Thank you very much for being here. It kind of lies with the same conversation we're just having with mentorship. My wife tells me so many times, all the years she spent with the Girl Scouts, it was just some of the, you know, it was just mind-changing for her, and really opened up a lot of doors for her. We hear about the summers in Cal Town and all the events that they did down there. So really appreciate what you're doing for the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good. You mentioned the cookies. There was some bartering before everybody got here, and I think I actually had thin mints.
I'm still going for those.
Yeah, the clerk swapped it out. Tell us a little bit about why the cookies. I mean, I've always been kind of curious, why the Girl Scout cookies, the proceeds that are made, where does that go? Like, can you give us some information? I mean, we know they're great, and we know every year that we're going to be blessed by them, but why the cookies?
Well, the cookies are a tradition for many, many years. And the cookies also offer an opportunity for the girls and the troops to earn. And they have their own cookie business. They are their cookie CEOs. And with that, the girls are able to purchase their membership, go to camp, travel. We have girls that are traveling internationally, locally. It's amazing opportunities that it really opens for them. And then the troops are also supported through the proceeds. And then overall, it helps us provide financial assistance to those who may not have other means to help with their opportunities.
Yeah, incredible life skills lessons, so wonderful. Well, the imprint that you guys have in our communities is profound, so we want to thank you again and celebrate you with this proclamation, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we'd like to get a couple pictures. If you can give us about a five-minute break, we want to go out on the stairs and celebrate Youth Horizons and the Girl Scouts 100th Anniversary. And then we'll be right back. Stay on your best behavior, sir.[786.69]
She's a valuable, valuable person in our community and I'm glad that I congratulate her on her election to the judge world and I want to thank her sincerely for everything she did for our Citizens Advisory Board. So congratulations Jackie and with that I'll make a motion to approve, accept the resignation of Jacqueline Kelly.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Michener Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item please.
Item E, resolution appointing Edward Weber to the Sedgwick County Afton Township Clerk position.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you Chairman. This item would appoint Edward Weber to the Afton Township Clerk position as recommended by Commissioner Wise. The, when there's vacancies in township official positions, KSA 25-1606 makes it the responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners to fill those vacancies. The recommended action in this case is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Wise.
I'm just thankful for my predecessor, Commissioner David Dennis, who was able to make some advisory recommendations on these roles. So I'm thankful for the willingness to serve. These townships are sometimes hard roles to fill, so publicly thank this one and I think we have one more coming up that are willing to serve on these township boards.
Okay, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, and I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, next item please.
Item F, resolution appointing Michael Roush to the Sedgwick County Garden Plain Township Clerk position.
Mr. Wagner.
Thank you Chairman, again Justin Wagner. This item is the resolution to appoint Michael Roush to the Garden Plain Township Clerk position. The same statute I've mentioned before would apply in this particular item. Commissioner Wise has recommended Mr. Roush for appointment. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Wise.
Well, thank you for being here and for being willing to serve. It's nice to formally meet you now. And so if you have a couple of words, I want to welcome that. I think now's the time.
So we can make a, what we'll do, let's make a motion and then invite Michael to make some comments and Kelly will do his deal.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Kelly Arnold.
Yep, good morning Commissioners. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Afton Township Clerk, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Very good. Michael, you're welcome to say a few things.
Thank you for this appointment. I would like to say a few words. I would like to echo Lynn Packard's comments on the snow. I'm also the operator out there and I can very much supplement what he had to say that the townships, we don't do a lot of the main roads, but we do all the secondary roads, school bus, mail routes, anything with emergency services. So I can attest to his work that we put in out there. It was, I've been doing this for 12 years and this was the worst snow that I've ever had to push off.
Wow.
So thank you, thank you for the appointment.
Thank you, and I think when we spoke on the phone, you were actually pushing snow at that time, so thank you for your work.
Yeah, well, Michael, the townships play such a vital role in this community, so we're very grateful for all the work you do and your willingness to serve. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, resolutions appointing 10 members to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens' Advisory Board. Those members are as follows. Cameron Dawson, Connor Glenn, Jamie Kissinger, Jeff Longwell, Joe Brown, Johanna Pfaff, Joseph Hamilton, Patrick Gahn, Mike Hill, and Kevin McWharter.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you Chairman. I just wanted to mention that this resolution would, this would be a series of resolutions that would appoint, or in some cases reappoint individuals to the Third District Citizens' Advisory Board. They're all recommended for appointment by Commissioner Wise. Just for the board's awareness, by resolution, the terms of the District Three CAB members all expired at the time of Commissioner Dennis's term ending, but Commissioner Wise has recommended these to individuals for appointment. The recommended action is to adopt the resolutions.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Wise.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And those that are here, our clerks here to go ahead and swear you in and Commissioner Wise will make some comments and then welcome your comments.
So come on down, I may end up doing this in two groups since we have so many here.
Sure. And Clerk, if we need to do, if we need to put a time limit on some of the speakers, we're happy to do that.
I will remind them, there is a five-minute time limit. Mike, okay, just raise your right hand and say I do at the end, all right? I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations. If you would like to say something, you can say something.
Thank you, sir.
What a, personally thank this commission. We're one of the few counties in the entire United States of America with the highest credit rating because of your stewardship and thank you for the opportunity as citizens to be able to have input. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, I'll let Mike, next group come up.
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Okay. Now, you get to go first.
They're not trying to let Jeff speak today. I just want to thank Stephanie and all the Commissioners for this opportunity and this appointment and I'm really looking forward to helping, just being a part of the Citizens' Advisory Board, so thank you very much and I'm looking forward to serve.
I have a lot to cover in the next 20 minutes. You know, I've had the opportunity to work for 25 years in local government and I've
appreciated that opportunity, but I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to serve on Commissioner Wise's Citizens Advisory Board. So thank you very much for letting me get back kind of into the community in a way that I'm familiar with. I want to thank my friends from Weba who have joined me today, who've come down here and so truly am looking forward to serving in the community in kind of a similar capacity than I'm used to, but Mr. Hill reminds me all the time now, Mr. Longwell, you're not in charge anymore. So I'll just be on the sidelines, sort of. Thank you, Commissioner Wise.
Thank you.
Very good.
Well, our lestrous friend there, he says he served in the community for 25 years. I've served in county and city government 38 years, so he, it's a privilege to be on your board, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The first time I stood before this board was as a county commission board was 40 years ago and there were just three of you.
Wow.
And there was no county manager, it was a county administrator. And the last time I spoke to the Board of County Commissioners was 24 years ago. Again, I look forward to, and I look forward to serving with my colleagues that have sworn in before me and thank you.
Thank you. And just for everybody, thank you. Some of the folks who are on the Citizens Advisory Board, as was I before being elected, and so I wanted to welcome some experience back on the board, but also I feel like I stacked it pretty good with people that are involved and feeling just in the community and able to speak into and advise from a citizen's point of view. I want to point out Connor Glenn is my high school student that's serving on the CAB and I just think that that's really exciting to have students that are engaged in, in community, in local government and willing to learn how it all works and how they can be effective and proactive. So thank you all for being here today and thanks for letting me steal some time of this meeting.
Yeah, very, very good, so, very good. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item please.
Item H, resolution appointing Hunter Davenport to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you Chairman. This item would appoint Hunter Davenport to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board as recommended by Commissioner Jim Howell. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Very good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that Hunter actually initiated the conversation and we've had some great conversations. She has great experience and great interest and passion really for the topic, so she's going to be an excellent appointment and I'm so glad to make this, make this connection today. Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we would approve the resolution appointing Hunter Davenport to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
I will second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
I do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do. All right, thank you so much. I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. I started with the county a couple months ago and I, hearing all your guys' testimonies and everything, I'm just excited to start my journey, so thank you so much for this opportunity.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, very cool. Thank you, Hunter.
Oh, I said right now, okay, thank you.
Okay, I had several appointments here and we've got several new business items that might take a little bit of time. Because of that, I want to go a little bit out of order today. I'd like to pause the Board of County Commission meeting and convene the governing body of Fire District Number One. Chief Nelson is here today and he's got some work to do, so we want to get through a couple items that he has on the agenda here. So that being said, I will officially call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaw.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
No one signed up for public agenda, so we'll move on. Next item.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, fire meeting minutes of January 8th, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, all Commissioners were present at this meeting. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the fire meeting minutes of January 8th, 2025. Second, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item B, report of the bids and, the report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on January 16th, 2025.
Okay, since we went a little bit out of order, our finance wasn't here and that was my fault. So I'm going to ask Manager Stoltz, would you be able to maybe walk us through this bid board item?
Joe's on his way.
Is he?
He's just now.
Okay.
Make kind of a "other."
Yeah, let's do that. We're going to move a little out of order, we'll go to consent and wait on Joe. So go ahead, Madam Clerk, call the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Okay, Manager Stoltz.
Chairman of Commission Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent, item C on the fire agenda today.
Okay, Commissioners, we all had an opportunity to visit about this specific item. Do I have any questions or comments here? And I would say that Chief Nelson is here if we have any specific questions or comments on this specific item. Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, item C.
Your question. A second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. I can't look Joe in the eye. He's not breathing completely.
Catch my breath here.
So we're going to go back to item B. As a formality, Clerk, would you go ahead and call item B for us again?
New business. Item B, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on January 16th, 2025.
Okay, and you're for permission, Joe Thomas, thank you, sir, appreciate you coming to answer.
Appreciate you talking a little longer and I'll catch my breath, sir. Now, all right, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Joe Thomas, purchasing director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts for Fire District Number One are two items. First one is radios for Fire District. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $81,092.56, or 96 cents. And this recommendation is contingent on the funding, I think you just approved on consent agenda. Second item is the self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Ed M. Feld Equipment Company, doing business at Feld Fire, in the amount of $160,654.84. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions between breaths and recommend approval.
Very good. And Joe mentioned it, but what we did on consent agenda, these bid boards are contingent on the dollars that were approved on consent agenda, so just make sure the public is fully aware. Okay, any questions on the bid board? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the recommendations of the bid board meeting on January 16th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Joe, thanks again, bud.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Okay, Commissioners, anything under other for the Fire District? Seeing none, next item.
Executive session.
Okay, we have no executive session for the Fire District, so we'll officially adjourn the meeting for the Fire District. Chief Nelson, have a good day and we'll resume and come back to the meeting for the Sedgwick County Board of County Commission. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item I, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, Series A, 2025, of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Okay, very good. Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, with Gilmore and Bell is here with us. Just to speak, but just to make sure everyone's caught up on the process, leading a variety of projects and reimburse actual costs, up outlines for our project listed for special assessments. So while those are bonded and will be structured over 15 years, we'll expect to repay, have that repaid with special assessments that are paid by anyone who purchases those properties. There are two projects that happened at the Courthouse Complex and five bridges that total 10.8 million. What you see before you is a resolution that would authorize staff to work with bond counsel and our municipal advisor to issue a variety of documents in order to prepare for a bond sale that would then be held on March 4th, which is a Tuesday, and then you would give either the county manager or myself, or the county managers designee, the ability to approve the bond sale on the 4th, but then bring it to you for ratification on the 5th. It does set a couple of parameters. While we are planning for an exceptional interest rate of 3.5 percent, again because of our AAA credit rating, always got to bring that up whenever I have the opportunity. You would authorize a sale to occur with a true interest cost of no more than 4.75 percent. You also would set a maximum on how much debt we can actually issue and so that allows us to have some flexibility if there's a way to restructure the debt that is sold so that we can actually wind up saving money in the long run, you would authorize that. So I'm going to ask Garth to come and speak to some of the details of the resolution itself and then we'll stand for any questions, but in lieu of that, I would just say if there are no questions, I would recommend you authorize the resolution and direct staff to proceed. So, Garth.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you, morning, Garth.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the county's bond counsel. As usual, Lindsay did such a great job explaining, I don't have much to add. I will just say that as you mentioned, the sale will be on March the 4th, ratification on March the 5th. The closing of the bonds will actually occur on March 25th. Once again, that does not require a county commission action or a meeting or anything like that, but instead on that day, that's when the bonds will be delivered to the purchaser based on the results of that sale on the 4th and exchange purchaser will transfer the purchase price to the county's bank account, at which point the county will be able to use that money to reimburse and pay for these 11 projects included in this bond issue. All stand for any questions that you may have, but if not, I will second what Lindsay said and request a motion and second and vote to approve the resolution.
Okay, very good. Thank you, and again, we've had quite a bit of discourse on this discussion, on these special assessments for these public improvements. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the staff recommended action and adopt the resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Lindsay, Garth, thank you again, appreciate it.
Very much.
Very good. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, resolution to dissolve the Citizens Advisory Board for the Fifth County Commissioner District of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you Chairman, Justin Wagner, County Counselor. Apologize for that noise there. Chairman, with your permission, I would propose the Board take up items J and K together. That be permissible with you, Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Howell, do you?
Yes, please do, sir.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, I'll start with item J. Item J includes a resolution that would dissolve the current District Five Citizens Advisory Board, which is Commissioner Howell's district. Item K would establish a district collaboration board in District Five. These items have both been requested by Commissioner Howell and I'll give a brief history of Citizens Advisory Boards, or we call them Cabs, in Sedgwick County. We've had those for roughly 10 to 15 years in various forms and really as a general rule, each Commissioners had a lot of discretion to shape their Cabs as they've seen fit. The Boards typically granted that type of discretion to each Commissioner in terms of what, how they're set up, how they're composed, what their function and purpose is, as well as the members that serve on each of the Cabs. The resolution for item J is pretty self-explanatory. If approved, it would dissolve District Five CAB. Item K, I'll get into it in a little more detail in that resolution. It would establish a Board of up to 18 stakeholders. These 18 stakeholders would include Commissioner Howell, who would chair the district collaboration board meetings, up to three individuals residing in District Five nominated by Commissioner Howell, and then would have one individual nominated by the governing body of each of the following political and taxing subdivisions. The City of Wichita, City of Derby, City of Mulvane, Wichita Public Schools, Derby Public Schools, Mulvane Public Schools, Rose Hill Public Schools, Gypsum Riverside Rockford Minnehaw Townships, Oaklawn and Sunview, and also Sun Swept Heights Improvement Districts. The purpose of the district collaboration board would be to provide the Fifth District County Commissioner and the Fifth District generally with opportunities to engage in the discussion and collaboration to raise and address issues of importance that occur within District Five. And one other item on this is that the district collaboration board would not hear zoning and conditional use cases. There are, of course, other hearings that happen on those cases and we've generally, those determinations as whether those are Cabs here cases or district collaboration boards, again, we've generally deferred to the Commissioners' preferences, they've set those up. The district collaboration board meetings would be open to the public, subject to Kansas Open Meetings Act. These resolutions can be approved by a simple majority vote and with that, I would defer to Commissioner Howell for any comments and rationale on this and be happy to stand for questions.
Okay, Justin, thank you so much. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we get started on this, I know there may be members of the public that want to speak on this as well, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you'd ask the public if they have any comment they'd like to make before we get started.
Without objection, yeah. Has anyone from the public, would you like to render some comments on this specific item J and K? Yeah, certainly. We would just ask for the record, if you can just give your name and your address. We'll try to use the same decorum that we use during public comment and allow up to five minutes. County Clerk will keep a timer for us. Good morning, Faith, welcome.
Hi, good morning, Faith Martin, District Five, I live at 608 South Jury. I want to talk a little bit about this today because I have come before this body before. We have a couple new members, but I have talked about the importance of district or citizen or advisory boards just in general, because I know there's been some conversation previously about potentially getting rid of boards because we didn't think they were effective. So there are case studies involving how citizens advisory boards have taken place nationally. There's been many, many case studies to support. They increase the deliberateness of government by engaging volunteer citizens. I like to use the word resident, because not every resident is a citizen. Allows residents to be a part of the political and governmental process that occur in their community, overcomes resident apathy and disinterest through lively and engaging projects and discussions. Boards are effective in getting issues addressed. Boards are effective in creating a stronger sense of community. Boards are effective in trust in public officials and confidence in local government. These outcomes occur at higher rates when there are clearly defined selection processes, applications and the like, training provided regarding the roles of advisory boards, what community members' roles are so they know what the advisory board can do, rules of order, participation, what tools are available, what staff can do, what services are provided that they can make recommendations on. Procedural guidelines, legal requirements, how to identify community needs and priorities. Sorry, I had to write it down because it's a lot. Resident boards are supported, when resident boards are supported and engaged, they are effective in getting resident issues addressed. They provide a conduit to communicate the thoughts and idea of community members that either are not confident or comfortable coming to public meetings. The final piece of this process is the advisory board report that goes out to the governing body. When advisory boards report back to this body what they are working on, what residents care about, they may be separate than a recommendation given to a specific member because even though we live in District Five, the decisions that you make affect everyone. My concern is not with creating new ways for civic engagement through vehicles like a collaboration board, my concern is with dissolving a board that was not given a chance to thrive and be successful. Even though boards have happened in Sedgwick County for 15 years, District Five's advisory board was only formed less than four years ago. I personally have attended more meetings than members that were appointed and have seen how it can be ineffective when boards don't understand what their role is or how to participate and are not trained. I believe that time and location contributed to a lack of participation. These board meetings are held during the workday on a Friday and I've given public comment many times at a board meeting of other boards that I serve on that are in the evening, that make it easy, make it more easy for people that work nine to five to be able to attend these meetings and give comment. Like I said, I have a lot of experience on advisory boards, but I was adequately trained and prepared on how to be an advocate for my community regarding civic engagement, regarding zoning, budget, what public comment looks like, how to communicate effectively and how to give feedback on staff projects and boardish, or community issues. Community involvement occurs when there are clear channels of communication, the community understands where to turn for help and it is equitable. understands where to turn for help, and it is equitable. So, District 5 being the only board where community members cannot talk about zoning and every other board can, whether it's city or county, is not equitable. While there have been some issues, I strongly disagree with this attempt to remove opportunities for citizen engagement, and any failure of that board to meet expectations is not the fault of cab members. They were appointed and didn't necessarily get the structure, support, and training they needed to be successful. I encourage this body to vote against, I know you're doing it together, I would encourage that you pass a collaboration board, because I've actually made recommendations that geographical representation is important. I represent my community on a district advisory board, and I report directly back to them, and I'm accountable to them. So, I appreciate you creating a collaboration board because that's important, but I would discourage the dissolution of the cab board. Please understand that having a standardized selection process, training, Robert's Rules of Orders, et cetera, regular reports to this body, and support by staff are provided. There's been opportunities for this board to be successful, and unfortunately, through no fault of their own, they weren't as successful, because we need processes for removal and replacement of board members that are not meeting expectation. We need clear documentation and reporting of minutes, agenda. What happens if we don't meet core, and what are we allowed to do? So, again, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and I would hope that you pass part of it, but don't pass the dissolution part.
Thank you, Faith. Commissioner Howell.
Faith, you don't go too far, because I'll probably have some questions and comments for you here in just a moment, so just stay close. But let's see if there's anybody else that wants to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just provide your name and address for the record, and for maybe five minutes.
Jason Marowski, District 5, Address 8838 East Denker Circle. My wife was on the cab, Denise Marowski, and I've been going to several of the meetings, and I'm not seeing the participation from the public. You have the cab members showing up, and that's it. And talking with Jim one-on-one, his door is always open. So, you could, the public can get ahold of Jim at any point in time when they want to talk about things. They just, the public just wasn't showing up to the Cabs, or his cab. And I think it's just how I saw it, showing up, because I was there to support the cab and support my wife, without the citizen showing up, it was a waste of resources and time and money, because you had to have a county person there doing the time, writing everything down. It was just, I saw it as a waste, and I support Jim's idea of removing the cab and starting something different that I think would work better for the community and for everybody. So, that's all I have to say.
Jason? Yeah, Jason, don't go too far, and you're going to sit close by and see if there's anybody else that wants to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly, would anybody else like to speak on this topic? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close public comments on this item, and I'd like to receive and file, make a motion to receive and file. I have additional work to do on these items, but I'd like to make a motion to receive and file.
Certainly, yeah, I'll second the motion. Yeah, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Blubow.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, may I continue?
Please.
Let me just start off by saying today's a bit of a sad day in many ways. Our chairman of Cab 5 has been suffering from cancer, and unfortunately, he did just recently pass a few days ago. Yeah, I'm so sorry to share that. And I know you guys know him, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news. His memorial service, I believe, is on Saturday, if I have the Monday right, it's February the 1st, down at the, it'll be at the St. Andrews Episcopal Church in Derby at 11 o'clock. And John Nicholas is a very good man, I've known him a very long time. Politically, he and I are not on the same side of the aisle, but that's okay, he's a good man. And the reason I appointed him to that board is because, and by the way, he's been there since the very beginning. The reason I pointed him to that board is because he's different than me. And there's nothing, you know, every Commissioner makes appointments for whatever reason that they do. I have followed some of the appointments of others, and I just want to share with the public that I went out of my way to make sure this was very bipartisan. We had actually more Democrats than Republicans. I'm Republican. We have had about 50/50 men versus women, women versus men. We've had African-Americans, we've had Asian-Americans, we've had Hispanic-Americans, we've had second language, English is second language folks in the room, we've had business owners, we've had retired people that use senior services, we've had military members, we had high school students. I could go on. The diversity of this board is very intentional. My thought was that if I wanted to appoint a board that looks like me, thinks like me, acts like me, is aligned with me mentally on all my policy ideas, then frankly, we're just going to talk about stuff that I already agree with, it would be not as valuable to me to be advised. And so, we were very intentional, and from the very beginning, made this as diverse as possible. John, knowing he's a Democrat but retired, he worked in the healthcare industry, had taken care of seniors and nursing home ministry, career field, it is a ministry, by the way. He brought a lot to that board. And I will be, by the way, speaking at his funeral, and I wanted to share that I will be truly honored to do that. John will be missed by many, he made a huge impact in our community. So, I'll say, I'm sorry for his passing, I am praying for Glenda and his family for their comfort, and want to let them know that he will be sorely missed. This has really nothing to do with the fact that the Cab 5, I would argue, was the very best cab out of the five. And to Faith's point, she said, "We didn't give it a chance to thrive." I think, I actually disagree with her on that, I think we did. And I think compared to other Cabs, and I qualify my comments on a couple of points here, I think other Cabs are doing the very best they can as well. But I have gone and read the minutes of the other cab boards, and they capture the attendance, they capture the subject matter, and I would say that Cab 5 was very intentional, spending most of its time discussing policy and advocating for legislation and looking at public safety issues and taxation and children's issues. And because of, they had the time to spend on those things, they were very, I felt very effective. I greatly appreciated the conversation. As much as I loved that, all of that, I also recognize it was a very formal board. We install it by resolution, much like the District Collaboration Board is about to be considered in just a moment. It's by resolution, we appoint members, they get sworn in, we have agendas and minutes, we have staff participation. In a sense, it's another level of government, and one of my principles is I like smaller government, like less government, and more citizen engagement. And you don't necessarily have to formalize government to have citizen engagement. I'll make that point here in just a few minutes as well. One of my concerns was for our staff. I noticed that in other boards, and by the way, let me go back, just, my predecessor, Jim Skelton, was on city council, and as you know, in the city, they have district advisory boards. They still have those in every district today. In fact, I believe it's required by whatever creation creates DAB boards, it's very consistent, and they're managed very consistently from council district to council district. One of the things they do on district advisory boards is the council member chairs the board, they do have public comment, they have staff briefings, they spend a lot of time on property rights cases. In fact, I was listening yesterday to the discussion, one of the council members said, "Well, I want to get to the issue of golf carts, but we have five property rights cases next couple of months, so I can't really get to this issue of golf carts until at least maybe March or April." Because they spend a lot of time talking about property rights cases. What you don't, which I may or may not know, is County Commission here conducts a public hearing. Property rights cases go before the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission, the staff make mixed recommendations, they have a public hearing, and they make recommendations to us. We conduct a secondary public hearing, and we want the citizens to engage their elected officials directly. I want to hear the data directly. In fact, we come into these meetings, we say, "We have whatever expertise communication, and by the way, I have no opinion, I'm going to let the public hearing speak to me, I'm going to look at the data today, let the public hearing speak to me, I'll make a decision based on what's presented at the public hearing." Citizens advisory boards advise the Commissioner. They, and by the way, in some of the minutes on some of these cab boards, citizens did not show up to represent themselves in a property rights case. It was even stated by cab board members that they would vote against them because they didn't represent, they didn't care enough about the cab board to show up to make their case. So, we're creating a third stop, or at least a third stop. We had a case a couple weeks ago, where I think it was seven, or I forget, seven or eight stops on this case, where they had to come back to us a second time, MIPC, I think, three times, a cab board a couple of times, and Baylor City Council at least once. And ultimately, they were denied their desires. I just think that there's too many stops, it's just too much government, and if you don't show up to every single one of those, they think you don't care. Going back to Jim Skelton and the DAB board, they spent most of their time doing property rights cases. Every once in a while, they would make a tour of something, they would have staff presentations. They were generally daytime meetings, the meetings, again, were chaired by the County City Council, well, on DAB boards, by City Council. As he brought the idea to County Commission, he actually called it a DAB, a District Advisory Board in District 5. He started this back in 2011, had four years with the meetings. People who sat on that board were generally connected to organizations. Even though it was called a district advisory board, it was really more about collaboration. And back at the time, I would give Jim Skelton some credit here, I didn't really totally understand exactly what he was doing. It was more about collaboration, less about advisory, it was sharing information between governing bodies. He had folks from school boards, he had folks from planning districts, he had folks from city councils, and city managers sit on these boards where they sat around the table and collaborated. There were some good things about that. When I came on, DAB 5 stopped, because the history of Sedgwick County is, we never had DABS before that. It was a brand-new thing, I looked at the cost, I actually had someone estimate the cost, we estimated, it was probably cost to the taxpayers around $4,000 over those four years, about $1,000 a year to provide that meeting. And again, it was very formal, had some impact on our staff, they added work on their things to do. Nothing wrong with what Jim did, I'd like to give him some credit and say it was actually a good thing. When David Dennis became Commissioner, he took the idea, because he served on a cab board, a DAB board for the city, and David Dennis became a Commissioner, one of his campaign promises was he was going to create a citizens advisory board. And in 2017, he did, he did in fact do that. So, he started in his first year as County Commissioner and created a citizens advisory board. He was the only one that had a citizens advisory board. And I would, again, I'll argue, they spent most of their time talking about property rights cases. Many of the folks that served on that board, again, were, I think, more closely aligned with the Commissioner, maybe a little bit less diverse than I would like to see. Two years later, Lacey Cruz created a citizens advisory board. She did that in 2019, and I would argue, once again, I think a lot of the members on that board were more aligned with the Commissioner, spent most of the time talking about property rights cases. Two years later, Sarah Lopez created a citizens advisory board in 2021, and I would argue, it's a little bit more diverse. They did add high school students to these boards, one membership, they went from 11 to 12, spent a lot of time talking about property rights cases. And again, I've read these minutes of these committees, of these board meetings, sometimes you'd have 12 members assigned to the board, and you only have maybe six or seven would show up. There was times it was actually down as low as four members of the board would show up, and no one from the public. And generally speaking, when the public showed up, it was because of the property rights cases. They wanted to speak on those issues. And again, not to repeat myself, but if they didn't show up, it was presumed by the board that people didn't care enough to show up to the cab board, sometimes they would lose their, they would get opposition created because they didn't show up. Because of Sarah Lopez, shortly thereafter in 2021, I also created a cab board right early, within about a week or two after she did hers, and then Commissioner Meitzner did his as well. So, we've had, that's kind of the history of these boards getting created, and in every one of these cases, following the example of Commissioner David Dennis, I don't believe any Commissioner here actually chairs their own board, maybe I'm wrong about that. I think one of the boards meets every other month, most of them meet monthly. I don't know that any of the Commissioners actually chair their own board, these boards are autonomous and independent. For the most part, I believe, they have their own bylaws, they create, they elect their own chairperson, and that's kind of how they have operated. I would say they've probably spent 50% or more, maybe much higher, maybe 75% of their time talking about property rights cases. My aversion to that is constitutional. The right to property is a constitutional principle, and I don't know that I want a process that's inconsistent, not recognizing government laws, if you will, that defines how property rights are defended, how property rights are gained or taken away. And so, to me, when someone loses their property rights based on DAB board, or should say cab board work, I'm a little concerned about the constitutionality of that consequence. And again, just because we don't do property rights cases on Cab 5 doesn't mean that anybody else is necessarily wrong, they can do what they like, they serve at the pleasure of the Commissioner, and so they can do it differently. I'm not criticizing them specifically, saying that they're wrong, that's not, it's just that I'm also wrong. We all do it differently, that's okay. Couple of other things, we talked about time and location. My concern for staff was, some of these meetings that have been attended by staff went as late as 11 o'clock PM. And that, to me, is a problem. Again, the citizens of the community rarely would attend these meetings, it would be mostly attended by board members and people who had property rights cases. There wasn't a lot of other people attending these meetings. It required minutes to be generated by staff, which takes more staff time, agenda creation, website work, all the things that are required to make these boards legal. Before we had cab boards, I had citizens town halls. I think citizen town hall is a very interesting topic. A lot of elected officials have citizen town halls where they invite the public to come out, and they stand for questions, they stand for comments, they provide information to their districts. And I want to get back to that. Stephanie, would you be willing to put up that slide? I created a slide to show 43 opportunities, you can just look at that. The blue ones are coffees, that's item number one. The brown ones are also coffees, these are different times of day, different parts of the county. The green ones are also coffee, so again, they have three of those a month, or we sit across the table for an hour and a half to two hours, and we talk about whatever you want to talk about. If you don't bring up a question or a comment, I'll just start educating people on what county does, and we talk about the county as much as possible. But this is citizen-led, this is an engagement, and you'll see the locations and times for those meetings. Then if you go a little bit further down, number six, there's a citizen town hall. I'm going to get back to the citizen town halls. That's an evening to satisfy the public, who has to work nine to five, as previously said. Three of those this year is scheduled in 2025, I plan on doing three of those again next year. And then you see the collaboration board meeting, which we're going to be creating in Item K here in just a minute. Collaboration boards, we're going to have up to 18 people, up to 18 people, that's three citizens, and myself, and up to 14 people from the different taxing jurisdictions overlapping to my district, not counting library districts, the DRC, drainage districts, cemetery districts, things like that. Cities, schools, townships, and improvement districts are policy creators, they provide services, and we have overlap between taxing jurisdictions in the county. And by the way, even though we have a SCAC meeting, those are cities that get together, that's not school boards. Most of the SCAC meetings are consumed with presentations of staff providing something to the cities, but there's not a lot of collaboration going on. They do provide, you know, "I have a parade, and we have a special event," but there's not a lot of collaboration about problems, our opportunities or solutions or ideas, and so collaboration is what's missing. So, Sedgwick County Association of Cities meetings are great, I tend those very faithfully, but it doesn't really check the box for me. And so, the collaboration board meetings, there are five of those on this schedule, because I was not able to get one in January, but five in 2025, there'll be six of those in 2026. I'm inviting, I'm not going to make the appointments for these cities and the school districts, I'm asking those governing bodies to use their own processes to select their own nominee, which will be installed in a future meeting, probably on, I believe, February 22nd is my intent, to have those before this commission to install the 18, up to 18 members that will sit on this board. This is a lunchtime meeting, it doesn't require a whole lot of work to put this together, it's a very intentional opportunity to get together and collaborate between governing bodies. I plan on sharing these meetings, I will capture minutes, we probably will record them and host them, put them up on YouTube, and the public is obviously invited. So, if you think the citizen engagement is lacking in District 5, I would challenge you to say, "Please look at the 43 events that were scheduled." Two of those happened, one was yesterday, two of those already passed, we have 41 yet to go here in 2025. There's a lot of opportunities. Also, I give out my cell phone, number 3162536797, call me or text me. I have a newsletter. I will meet with you in my office, I'll meet with you at your home, I'll meet with you in the community, I'll meet with you over coffee anywhere, anytime, one-on-one, or one of these meetings here. The idea that you don't have access to your Commissioner, to engage him and advise him on anything, I'm open to all 105,000 constituents in my district to advise me, not just 11, and not just the seven that show up. This is less expensive, it's better for our staff, and it's much more transparent, and much more accountable, much more available. It's not that I'm not critical of other Cabs, they can do whatever they like, they serve at the pleasure of the Commissioners. But I don't want to support criticisms that I'm not available, that I'm not listening, that's not true. The formality is part of the problem. And by the way, as I've talked about, the collaboration boards with these other cities and other bodies, I've had quite a bit of excitement, because right now, there's nothing that checks that box. I have so much more I could say, I don't think I've said, I think I probably said what I need to say. Well, I would say, I guess, one more thing. If I was Chairman, and of course, I'm not the Chairman, but if I was the Chairman, I would have five evening meetings a year, probably on the last Wednesday of the month with the low subject, I would have a very small subject matter on those agendas. If you go back to 2016, we did, in fact, when I was Chairman, we did have five evening Board of County Commissioner meetings, one in each district that were remote. We had one in Derby, we had one in Park City, we had one in Hayesville, and on it goes. Each district was able to host one Board of County Commissioner meeting in the evening. And I've been an advocate for that for years now, but I'm not in charge of making those decisions. So, I'll do what I can as a Commissioner for my district. I think these are good changes, they're very positive, it's not negative, it's not against any citizen. If anything, this is better for citizens than it's ever been. Mr. Chairman, I would stand for questions, and then at the appropriate time, I'll make motions to adopt both these resolutions.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it. From discussion here at the bench, any Commissioners have any questions or comments about the combination of Items J and Item K? Okay, seeing none, I would just make the comment that I believe that every Commissioner has a right to, with their cab, to form their cab, or back there of a cab, and I do think the collaboration board, I think, is an intriguing idea, and I'm very interested to see how these things develop, so. Okay, doesn't seem to be any questions or comments. Commissioner Howell, you're welcome to make a motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I will just do these, I guess, one at a time or together.
Commissioner Howell, Justin Wagner, County Counselor, I think you could make a motion jointly to adopt the resolutions in both Items J and K together, if you would like.
Well, without reading all the information there, I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we would approve the we would approve the resolutions on item J and K that would dissolve the Citizens Advisory Board for the Fifth District and create a district collaboration board for the Fifth District.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thanks for those that, that came to share. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, consideration of a memorandum of agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding the use of state general funds provided in Senate Bill 28.
Okay, Manager Stolz.
Chairman of Commission, good morning. Tom Stolz with the County Manager's Office. I'm going to present to you in a few minutes a memorandum of agreement to consider to sign with Kansas Department of Health and Environment regarding a Senate bill that was adopted last summer. But before I do that, I want to just give a little bit of background and history on, on how we got there today. And I know that this has been well-publicized, but for the sake of the public, I think it's worth going through very briefly on how we got to this, this matter today. Back in the 1970s and, or 80s, it's unknown when, or it was possible that it was over a continuous time, the Union Pacific Railroad, south of K96 between Highway 135, the canal route, and Grove Street, went through a series of spills of a solvent that has leached into groundwater. The, the chemical, I'll mention this a couple of times because it's important, what this chemical is, is called trichloroethylene. It's, it's called by the acronym of TCE, so when I refer to it from now on, I'll say TCE. It is a solvent commonly used for degreasing and will contaminate soil and groundwater. This spill was discovered after the event in 1994, when the city of Wichita was doing roadwork on 21st Streets in between the canal route and Grove. That's, that's when the discovery was made. KDHE got involved, Kansas Department of Health and Environment got involved in 1998, and identified the source of the contamination and that the UP rail yard was responsible for that spill. Since 1998, the, the KDHE has gone through a series of investigations and remedial measures to deal with the groundwater and soil contaminations caused by that site, all the way up to current, present time. They are still working on remediation on, on a spill that happened 40-plus years ago. I come back to, to TCE. It is a colorless, volatile liquid. It evaporates quickly, it is toxic to the central nervous system, kidney, liver, and immune system, and it also causes, can cause, a series of cancers. Kidney cancer, liver cancer, lymphoma, and, and other health concerns. So this is, it's a serious matter and a serious health situation for this, for the impacted community. The best I can tell throughout this process, I think the state has focused on the remediation of the soil, but I don't know that we've worked on the remediation of the people that live in that area. At no time could we find, could I find, any evidence that anyone from Sedgwick County government, even back in the time of this spill, all the way through the remediation periods, was notified. During the spill period after discovery by the city of Wichita in 1994, there was work being done, as mentioned, from the state. In the fall of 2022, so two years ago, the presence and history of this plume caught the attention of citizens and began being publicly discussed. And that is when Sedgwick County began to be invited and involved in this situation. In 2023, the Kansas Health Foundation gave $50,000 donations to Hunter Health, Grace Med, and Health Corps for citizen education regarding the contamination and available screening options for citizens that lived in that, in that area. That's the first I could, as I look back historically, that anything was talked about for people that were in that particular area. Later and during that same time period, the Kansas Health Foundation also approved $400,000 to cover unreimbursed testing for citizens who resided or had been exposed in the plume area. Only $33,000, a little bit less than $33,000 from this fund, were utilized, and a total of 73 patients were tested with that opportunity. And the FQHC, the Federally Qualified Healthcare Systems, stated that they had difficulty managing this process and getting reimbursement. On July 1st of 2024, the Kansas State Legislature, Legislature designated $1.5 million in funds to aid in subject testing in relation to the 29th and Grove contamination spill. The state also designated another $1.0 million in funds for subject testing if a local match of up to $1 million could be raised, dollar-for-dollar match. So there's a total on the table from the state of 2.5 million, and another potential for a million if a non-state match can be raised, or for a total, grand total of 3.5 million. The proviso and the MOA, the memorandum of agreement, indicate that this money, if obtained, has to flow and be dispensed through Sedgwick County for dispersal. Over the last month, Chairman Beatty, Wichita Councilmember Brandon Johnson, Ed O'Malley from the Kansas Health Foundation, Dr. Elizabeth Abla from KU Med, who is also here today, and city and county staff have been discussing an approach to properly and responsibly deal with this issue. There have been several conversations with the governor's office and KDHE, plus their attorneys regarding the stipulations attached to this money. I think the goal of the local team is to utilize this one-time state money to create a comprehensive and responsible plan to help with testing of the people who were potentially exposed as a result of this contamination and potentially other contamination sites within the county. If the proposed MOA is approved, and Justin Wagner, Al County Counselor, will get up shortly and talk about the specifics, the specifics of the MOA. If this proposed MOA is approved, it would be Sedgwick County's aim to pass this money through to a third-party entity, potentially Kansas Health Foundation, to initiate a plan to facilitate testing for the citizens exposed, exposed to the, the plume of 29th and Grove, as well as other contamination site areas within the county. Any provider in the community with the ability and mission to provide such tests would be considered, including federally qualified health centers, Guadalupe Clinic, and other providers who help to provide service to underinsured and non-insured people. If the MOA is approved, the county could consider a financial contribution in a future meeting, along with what the city of Wichita did yesterday at their meeting, the Kansas Health Foundation will discuss at their next board meeting, and any other private providers to access as much of the 1 million state match money as possible. At that point, at this point, I'd like to stop. I want to let Justin talk about the MOA, and then we'll both stand for questions together. And Dr. Abla is here if there's any technical questions.
Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Chairman Justin Wagner, County Counselor. As Tom described, there, there's a budget proviso that really underlies this memorandum of agreement, or MOA, as I'll call it. And, and just to buttress what the manager was saying, out of those 2.5 million dollars, if, if the board ends up approving this MOA today, that would essentially unlock 1.5 million automatically from the state funding. The other million dollars, potential million dollars from the state would be, require a local match, dollar-for-dollar, and it would be on a rolling basis under the MOA. Any funds for that match would need to be, the local match would need to occur on or before June 30th of 2025. The, the MOA doesn't direct how it, any of the local funds would be spent, the matching funds, it's only addresses the state funds, the up to 2.5 million dollars. Does indicate that the KDHE funds will first be designated for priority use within the health study boundaries of the 29th and Grove contamination site. However, the full scope of the funds can be used with reference to any contamination sites within Sedgwick County. So it's not just the spill area that the manager mentioned, it could be, it could be county-wide. Any funds received from the state would need to be spent by December 31st, 2026. If they would not be spent, then the county would remit any funds back to KDHE, not later than February 28th, 2027. As Tom was indicating, the, the MOA does not commit Sedgwick County financially to provide any local match. Entering into the MOA would commit Sedgwick County to the administration of between 1.5 million and 2.5 million of state Kansas funds. The MOA includes provisions about ensuring the subrecipients expenditures would occur pursuant to the MOA. There's other provisions that would allow the county to put in place procedures for how funds can be spent. And that is something that clearly county staff, if this, if it is the will of the board to approve this, we would administer that pursuant to the MOA. The approval of this MOA would require a simple majority vote. The recommended action, the agenda is to approve the MOA, authorize the county manager to sign it, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions, as well as Tom, and I think as Tom mentioned, Dr. Abla is here as well.
Okay, very good. Let me, Dr. Abla, I will have some questions, so if you want to go ahead and make yourself down. Before we open up for comment from commissioning questions, I'd just like to make a couple comments, since this is in District Four, this particularly is in District Four, and this has been a discussion I've been involved with now for about two and a half years in working through this. I appreciate the summary that the manager gave, I appreciate the summary that Justin gave on the proviso. I would just say that over 40 years, that the people that live in this contamination plume have no idea that there was poison underneath their feet, and that is significant. And I don't think, no matter the details that we get into today, I think that premise needs to permeate above, above all things, is these individuals had no idea there was poison underneath their feet. There's a lot of things that we do here that are good, there's a lot of things we do here that are, that are hard. I can tell you that this, there's been several issues, but this issue, this contamination plume in my district is, has been a really heartbreaking issue to work in, because I've seen how it's really impacted people. It's impacted people because of fear. One of the results of KDHE's action was they released a health study, and the health study is hard to understand from the average layperson. And what it didn't do was bring confidence, what it did do was create more fear for people in this area. People that have relatives that have been sick, people that have heard a lot of stories about other people that have been sick. So I would just say, for me, what permeates the most in this discussion, and I want the public to understand, is really just the lack of justice for people. The lack of clarity, the lack of urgency. Forty years, the lack of collaboration and communication for an entire generation of people. The systems that govern these things, particularly contamination issues, they might work fine in remediation. I, I'm not an expert to understand the remediation piece of this, and they might work fine in that regard. But the result is that silos get built and community members are left out of the discussion more often than not. Not just community members, but so are local government electeds. The manager mentioned Councilmember Johnson in his district, he had no idea this was here. His predecessors, including Levonta Williams, had no idea. I had no, this is my, I had no idea this plume existed to this magnitude, and I'm assuming that neither of my predecessors knew as well. There is a real gap here in communication, and the system is not working for the individuals that are impacted, not just at 29th and Grove, although for 40 years, this one rises to the surface. But this system is not working for the other 220 active contamination sites in Sedgwick County. 220 active water contamination sites and ground contamination sites in Sedgwick County. So when systems aren't working with communication where the public feels like they are involved, what happens is people lose trust. And that's what's taken place here in this specific 29th and Grove situation. So my hope today, and, and we could talk about this for hours upon hours, and I'd love to share all the things with town halls, the several town halls, the dozens upon dozens of meetings that we've had with local leaders and organizations, there's a lot to cover. But what I hope is today, is that we can take a big step forward in helping these people. We've worked to create, try to create a system that will really help people, not just in their testing, and that's preeminent, is the testing piece, but to create a system that will systematically remove barriers for them to access treatment, not just once, but long into the future. So there's a lot of conversation that needs to be had on this. The MOA is what we're talking about today. This is a big step forward to create this system, and that's what I wanted to ask Dr. Abla about, and I want to thank you publicly for the work you've done in helping us with this. But you're somewhat the resident expert in regards to water contamination, ground contamination. Can you, two questions. Number one, can you give us just an idea of the magnitude of these contamination issues in this county? But also, could you speak a little bit to what we've tried to work as local, local government, local organizations, local leaders, and why the system that we're advocating for in this MOA is something that we should be advocating for?
Thank you so much. Good morning. I'm Elizabeth Abla. I am a professor at the University of Kansas School of Medicine in Wichita, in the Department of Population Health. I'm very happy to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I really, I'm happy to be here. I think that this is an extremely important move that the county is making, and it's following what the city did a couple of days ago, or last week, I have no idea what day it is. I was excited, I thought it was Thursday, and then realized after about an hour of being awake, that it's actually Wednesday. I am, when it comes to the magnitude, I can give you, I think, you know, the numbers, I can repeat back as what you just said, of the number of active, active sites. But I think when you think about even just one home, and that knowing that there is contamination, that there are plumes that have been built up under our feet, as you say, and then for people who have not been connected to city water, that they have been exposed for decades. And their intent is to drink water that is safe and healthy. And so often, they will go ahead and conduct a number of tests that they are told to conduct on an annual basis, including, for instance, making sure that nitrates, checking for nitrates, checking for bacteria. What happens is that there are loads and loads and loads of tests that can be conducted, and VOCs, or volatile organic compounds, is a, that's a totally separate set of tests. So when we think about, for instance, West Wichita and the contamination that occurred there, or Hayesville, or Forest Hills, very large contamination plumes in addition to 29th and Grove, we had people for decades, in West Wichita in particular, and in Hayesville, who had no access to city water and were drinking this contaminated water for decades, bathing in it, and they were doing all the things that they were supposed to be doing. So there have been a number, as you say, Chairman, there have been a number of miscommunications and lack of opportunity to connect. I think the reason, to get to your second question, for a systemic solution is that this is going to continue happening. So in addition to Union Pacific, there were also some dry cleaners that were in that area of 29th and Grove. Same with West, West Wichita, that was the predominant concern there. Those contamination plumes really began because of very common practices of how people got rid of materials, of chemicals, standard practice in those days. Not something anyone would encourage, and it's not specific to Wichita, it's not specific to Sedgwick County or Kansas. This was nationally and quite frankly, internationally. So we know better now, and so we need to do better. And there are a lot of systems that are in place and can be put into place, and I think this is a terrific step forward. I think it has a load of opportunities to get community members engaged again in feeling like they're being heard and that they're being taken seriously, that their concerns are actually a problem.
Yeah, very good. Dr. Abla, thank you. Please hold, there might be some questions and comments. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much. I guess first off, I want to look at legal. I mean, has, has anyone pursued anything with Union Pacific? I know about the dry cleaning situation, as we've worked through that, but have statute limitations run out, or how does that work?
That's a good question, Commissioner Bluebaugh. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. There, there is actually an ongoing federal lawsuit involving this. Union Pacific is the defendant in that. It's, it's ongoing, I think they're in discovery. From what I recall, Kevin Stamper in our office looked into that, and I believe that there, some of the cases, counts have been dismissed, but I believe there is still one count pending in that lawsuit. So there is civil litigation, I think essentially a tort claim. I think the remaining claim was that the discharge statute in the state of Kansas was not, had not been properly followed by Union Pacific, and again, that's, that's still in front of the courts.
Okay. So there is a possibility of some money maybe coming in at some time?
Yes, and that's, that's ultimately, you know, something, I have no idea what's likely to happen in that lawsuit, and lawsuits are inherently unpredictable. And of course, it's worth noting that that's, and I haven't read the petition in depth for a while, it, it was filed about a year and a half ago, I believe. It was filed about a year and a half ago, I believe. But I believe they're trying to bring various tort claims and things along those lines. And just to be clear, anything in this MOA or any of this is focused on testing. It does not include treatment, it does not include a tort claim. But it is a fair question to ask, Commissioner Bluebough. And that's about the extent of what I know about it at this point. But be happy if you have additional questions, try to answer those.
Dr. Avila, can you tell me what's happening today? I mean, do we have any idea how many people are being tested, what percentage is coming back? And then, I guess I kind of want to allude, is this going to open it up to the whole city? Because we've had the contamination, like you've mentioned, in other areas. Is it going to be just, you know, one area, or is it going to be something we can open up and provide the service to everybody that's been affected by groundwater contamination?
Commissioner, I appreciate the question. Yes, today, it's very patchwork. Piecemeal, patchwork, anything that is not systematic. So if there is an, someone who believes that they have been exposed to the contaminated groundwater in, yes, 29th and Grove area, or any of the others, this would allow for people to get tested. Currently, people can go to their physician or primary care, they can get some tests, but there is no expectation that it would be paid for by anyone other than themselves.
Okay. So this is going to be much more affordable or no cost, I guess? Is that what we're looking at?
You bet. And so when we're looking at 3.5 million, it allows for considerable ability for the FQHC, excuse me, the federally qualified health centers and other local healthcare providers to be able to offer those types of services.
Okay. Can you kind of walk me through the vision? I know everything's not ironed out, but I guess we're talking about maybe buying a machine, or kind of walk me through what we're thinking.
You bet. So let's say that the entity that does get the 3.5 million after Sedgwick County receipt, once we get the fund raised and funds raised and everything, and let's say it does amount to 3.5 million, let's assume that it goes to Kansas Health Foundation for the sake of conversation. They would then begin a RFP, or a request for proposals. They would open that up as a grant program. It would be a competitive grant program, so it would not be an automatic for any entity. Those health facilities would then be eligible to, excuse me, I'm a hand mover. Those entities would then be eligible to be able to provide distinct need and indicate why they need those specific items, whether it's materials, supplies, or as you mentioned, it could also be equipment. So in order to be able to allow for testing to occur at a systems level, because the type of testing that needs to occur for this type of exposure is, to be honest, lifelong. So symptoms can occur, or signs can occur, at multiple points throughout someone's life, depending on the amount of exposure they've had and when they were exposed. So this type of a solution is more systemic because it allows for the health entities that are the healthcare providers in our community to build their capacity so that they can then treat patients who, at this point, they have to send to other entities to be able to get an ultrasound, or an MRI, or whatever, a CAT scan, whatever it might be. So this type of funding will be instrumental in allowing the community to grow and to be able to care for our own residents.
Okay. So this is fluid, it's going to keep going on, and we're not necessarily looking at cleaning up the areas, or doing additional? I know KDHE's came in and we've done a lot, but we're not going to turn every piece of dirt, you know, to cleanse it. So if this is a one-time expense for us, how do we, how do we shut it off, I guess?
Yeah, so I think I can answer that. And please, if there's anyone else, councillor, if you'd like to jump in. But yes, so the funding does expire. So the funding from the state would expire in June of, no, excuse me, December 31st, 2026. So we would then ensure that all of the funds would be spent and that the federally qualified health centers and others who are eligible to be able to receive the funding so that they can purchase the equipment that they're needing. So yes, there are remediation efforts. That is not something that we're talking about specifically with these funds.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
If I may just add a little bit of context to that. The remediation efforts are ongoing. There are more wells coming, that process is ongoing between KDHE and Union Pacific. Part of the discussion here is, because these are ongoing, it's been very clear from the state to us, and our mindset, I know the city of Wichita, KHF, also agrees that this is one-time funding. So what we need to do is build a system that can continue the needed testing without the dollars. And in order to do that, they're going to need, because FQHCs do this at a low cost to the individual anyhow, and they're going to serve anybody that comes to the door. So that, they need the bandwidth in order to continue the testing without the funds to do that. So this one-time shot of funding is going to allow them that capacity. So, okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Avila, for being here today.
You bet.
I just have some basic understanding questions I need to understand a little bit deeper. So if the, if the ground is contaminated below their feet, or below their home, if they're not, if they're using municipal water supply, they're not growing vegetables on their land, let's just say, what is their, what exactly is their exposure to this?
Okay, so that's an excellent question. So there are different levels of exposure, and there are different types of exposure. So the amount someone might be exposed, for instance, thinking West Wichita, where everyone was on their own well, a private well, or non-public well. Whereas here in 29th and Grove, there were some folks who only had wells. There were also people who had a non-public water well in 29th and Grove, and they had public water. So the, it varies as to the amount of exposure. And then when we're looking at the type of exposure, so for instance, if someone was consuming it, drinking it, bathing in it on a regular basis, that type of thing, that is a much greater exposure than, for instance, if it were just airborne. And let's say that's where you look for radon exposure, where you, so there are different types and levels. But yes, there, the exposure to those types of contaminants, they are PCE, TCE is the one that's predominantly in this area. That exposure to that, it is a volatile organic compound, so there are a number of health concerns that are occurring.
Let me restate my question just a little bit. So again, if they're not, if they're not drinking the well water, they're not bathing in that well water, they're not eating vegetables grown with water that was contaminated, you know, watering the vegetables in the backyard type of thing, how do they get exposed to the TCE that's in the ground?
The airborne. So that's, that's more along what I'm talking about with vapor intrusion. So if, for instance, it is below our home, and we are inside the home, that just even being exposed to the vapor, that is an exposure.
So there is cancer-causing VOCs in the air?
Yes, exactly.
Really? Okay. Enough concentration, that's a health crisis in this area, that that much VOCs airborne in that area?
Yes, so that's what kicked this off. So Kansas Department of Health and Environment and others have been working to remediate that.
Okay. I understand the concern about the groundwater, if it's well water. Okay, that's obvious to me that the well water is a problem. Is the well water a much bigger problem than the airborne, that you're, in your opinion? If there's someone still drinking well water today, is that?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Yeah, so in terms of risk, health risk, is it, well water, I would assume is millions of times more risky than what might be airborne?
In terms of the amount of exposure?
Yeah.
If it's equal parts, yes. So if I have five years' worth of exposure to drinking contaminated groundwater, that's generally probably, that's going to put me at higher risk than if I were in a home. But it's different type of health concerns that would emerge from that as well.
So I'd be like, you know, probably the right term would probably be something that parts per billion type of exposure. Is it airborne might be, you know, some parts per billion, whatever that number would be, but the amount of water, the amount of contamination in the groundwater that's coming from a water well would be incredibly higher. And so that would have a more direct contact on skin and ingestion, that type of thing. So I think the health impact for someone consuming well water would be incredibly higher than the exposure simply being in the area and breathing the air. But I would love to see those parts per billion testing. Have they tested the air and the water? Has every, has every residence had their water tested by KDHE? And we know where, they've detected the TCE or VOCs in their, in their drinking water?
That's a great question. In terms of parts per billion, I don't have the data on me, but I'm happy to share that information. In term, oh, shoot, fire, I just forgot your second question. Say your second question again, please.
Well, I guess I'm wondering, is have they in fact actually tested the drinking water at each residence? And do we know which homes are on well water, which homes are on municipal water? I think, yeah, the water being the biggest concern here. There are some homes there, I understand, still don't have municipal water supply.
So I do not know the extent to which KDHE has done. I know that they have done, in partnership with others, some door-to-door. I have not been a part of that process. But yes, I do know that they have been doing that, and they have tested. They've looked for wells, so wells have been, tried to be identified through this process. Not everyone knows that they have a well, so going through that process to be able to identify.
I think the reverse of that would might be easier. If they have a water meter in the front of the house, and they have a water bill, and someone's paying the bill, we know they're on municipal water. So I guess that's pretty easy to check those boxes and find out who doesn't have that.
So someone can be on city water in addition to having a water well.
I do that at my house, actually, but I don't drink the well water. But again, having a water meter and having municipal water in their home is a first step of getting this thing fixed. And I don't know how many homes are right now, don't have a water meter. And it seems like, that's pretty basic information. We ought to be starting that discussion. This money we're talking about today, first thing we have to do is stop digging the hole. We need to provide safe water to everybody who lives in the area. And right now, if someone's drinking well water, that has to stop. That's first. Second of all, I think money to provide testing for every residence for their drinking water would be the next step. And it sounds to me like that's still not, that box isn't completely checked yet. We don't know right now who has safe water and who doesn't. And then thirdly, if I understand correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, but the first part of testing here is a blood test. And for those folks that are concerned about their health that want to have a blood test, we want to provide that blood test free of charge and provide a diagnostic, if you will, in their blood to detect whether or not they have the markers for cancer that may be coming from this contamination. Am I right in saying it that way?
It can be one of the first tests, yes.
And then if they find markers for cancer, then they have to go into more diagnostic testing.
That's, you've got it. That's right. That's part of the cumulative nature of this. It just continues to build.
So what's my concern is, a couple of things here. Number one, this, this whole solution ends in 2026. This is only, this is a solution from now through next year, and it's over. Then we're back to square one again. This is not a long-term solution. This is a Band-Aid. And again, we're talking about state has one and a half million on the table, we're contemplating quarter, between city and county, a quarter million. They'll mention another quarter, another quarter million, that's a half million together. Altogether, that's $2 million. Am I doing that right so far? $2 million on the table. Kansas Health Foundation is really, really good at doing foundation work. Why not put that money into a foundation and provide the cost for blood tests and potentially diagnostic testing through a foundation that provides services forever? $2 million is a lot of money. And the blood tests are fairly inexpensive. And I don't know how many people live in this area, but if they live in this area and they get the markers for, for needed and much more diagnostic tests, there's money in the foundation to cover the cost of that test. I don't know why, this to me is a, to you, to put in equipment and CHMC, or is...
FQHCs.
FQHCs. And then providing staff and the expertise to read those tests, it doesn't really cover the problem long-term. I have talked about, by the way, we spent $4 million of COVID money leaning forward, creating what we call the molecular diagnostics lab over at Spirit Systems. That lab is still there, is still functioning and doing great work. In fact, they've expanded their services. They do what's called now biomedical lab, lab testing. I just talked to Tanya just yesterday, Weatherspoon, and they are, they are prepared, just, there may be other labs also. I'm sure this has to be competitive if we do this at all. But just throw this out there. They are able to provide blood tests for everybody in 80 sites across Sedgwick County, not just this one. And not just do the testing and look for the markers for cancer, but they can catalog those for 10 years, which is required under the law. They have to be catalogued and be available for retesting up to 10 years after that initial, and once they receive the sample, has to be catalogued and kept available to them for 10 years for other testing potentially. They're prepared to do that too, at a very low cost. Second of all, they're not going to do the MRIs, but I would much rather see Kansas Health Foundation provide a voucher program. We could have a number of places out there that do diagnostic testing, like MRIs, for example, that through a voucher program, if they're qualified and they have the markers for cancer in their blood test, they would be eligible for an MRI through a voucher system. They can get that number of different places around town, paid at a predetermined cost. This program needs to have some review. Also don't like the deadline on this. We're throwing money at this as a proviso, because, by the way, that means it didn't go through a committee hearing. This is money thrown, put into appropriations bill, probably to get 63 votes. And I appreciate what this is trying to do. I support the solution. I want a real solution. But this is a Band-Aid. This is only providing a solution for today. And it's really not even a full solution, because we're creating equipment that has to be calibrated, it has to be operated, it has to be maintained, and ultimately replaced. And there's costs associated with that solution that we don't, we're not even talking about today. And no one knows who's going to pay for that. Kansas Health Foundation is really smart, and I think for this much money, why not create a foundation solution to this forever, not just for this site, for 80 sites across Sedgwick County? And my biggest concern is, frankly, we're not even addressing the issue of people drinking contaminated water today. We've not tested the water yet. And we don't have, we don't have any plan to make sure that they have another option for safe drinking water. This is not even part of that at all. This is simply just blood tests. And I just think, the bigger topic here is, we have a problem, we've not addressed it anyway. The state has not addressed it. I'll just say this finally, I'll stop talking and you can respond all you like, but this is not a Sedgwick County rated problem. We are trying to invest ourselves in getting the problem fixed. Look at the indemnification language on page six of the contract from the state, and that talks about indemnification of the state itself. It doesn't talk about county. We're going to put some money into this. I think it actually, in my opinion, if I was a lawyer, I might argue that you've put some money into this, obviously you think you have responsibility here. We're getting ourselves in something, involved in something that we don't actually technically have responsibility for yet. And I'm a little concerned about putting money towards something that is not clear where a liability is. Because I think I was, a good savvy lawyer might argue, hey, you guys put some money into this, why'd you do that if it wasn't your problem? The state's got indemnification, I'm not sure that we do. I have a lot of concerns about this. I'll support the $125,000 when it comes up. I care about the topic. I think everything has been put together in front of us, the short deadline, the, essentially the bully tactic of the state to tell us we have to do this right now or they're going to take the money away, is not good policymaking. And I would implore Kansas Health Foundation to do this differently. This is, this whole thing is kind of a mess. I'll support it, because if I don't, I know I'll be classified as being someone who doesn't care about people. That's not true at all. I care deeply about people. But this is not a good process. This is not a good program. We can do so much better. Thank you. Dr. Avila, you're welcome to respond.
I have a few responses. Commissioner Howell, I really appreciate your enthusiasm and your passion for this. I feel the same way. I think there is a lot of work that needs to be done, and this is a component. I have a master plan, that might sound nefarious, but it really, we have a lot of work to do, and it's not just in Sedgwick County. It's all across the state. There's policy change that needs to occur all across the state that will allow for us to protect these citizens. I want to be clear, the water has been tested. And I believe, but I cannot speak with authority on behalf of KDHE, that all residents of 29th and Grove have at least had the option of connecting to ground, excuse me, to the city water, if they so desire. So I'm not suggesting that that has not occurred. When it comes to the Kansas Health Foundation, I know that they are going in a very different direction, and they have allocated funds very generously. And the, a lot of the sites did not take them up on this. And to be even clearer, as to your point, the lack of communication and the lack of this being a strong initiative has resulted in this sort of piecemeal... this being a strong initiative has resulted in this sort of piecemeal work where 73 people were tested, whereas we really have an opportunity with this, although there are flaws for sure. I believe this is a first step in starting to make something that went down really, really poorly and to make it right.
That's right.
Just to wrap up, I guess another comment since, let me say, when Hayesville had their water supply provided to homes, they didn't pay for it.
That's right.
Okay, KDHE stepped up, there was government solution. There was dry cleaning solution in the grounds. Those folks that had water supplies connected to their homes did not have to pay for those water services to be added to their homes. Who's paying for these? If you say they, the city offered to hook up their homes to city water, does that mean you got to pay $3,000 for someone to make a connection to your home because they don't have the money?
Again, I am not the person to contact on this. I cannot speak with authority, but my understanding is that yes, Kansas Department of Health and Environment would have connected them if they were on only a water well. I don't know if anyone has better authority.
Justin Wyatt, our County Council Commissioner. How, that's my understanding from a prior situation. I think it was the one in Hayesville. I think the state did pay to connect some of those folks to city water in that particular case. And I think, again, I think the money came from the state, if I remember correctly.
Do we know in this case whether or not the state's offered to pay for those connections?
I'm not aware of that, Commissioner Howell.
And just because they offered to hook up a water line to their house doesn't mean that that, it may be cost prohibitive. So again, we've got a lot of money on the table here. If there's a number of homes that need water connected and the money is the reason why they don't have it connected, that needs to be a solution on the very front end of this entire discussion.
I need to comment here. There is, on this particular MOA and in this proviso, there's, it's very specific on how this money has to be spent. And you're raising a really good point that definitely should be answered, but this money is for testing. I'm not sure that we have the latitude under the current language. And Justin, you can comment on that. That's number one. Number two, this money, I think the evolution of this money can serve the entire county, but 29th and Grove has to be prioritized according to the memorandum of agreement. So I just want to put that out there for the commissioner to understand that as we market this, if the commission votes for this and we market, we push this forward, 29th and Grove has to be the priority. But then the rest of the county could be, and correct me if I'm wrong, on that chairman or doctor, that's the spirit of this money. But I'm not sure right now that we could take a chunk of that money and hook somebody's water up.
I understand that. Mr. Manager, thank you for that. To be clear, this didn't go through a committee process. They just inserted a couple of sentences in the appropriation bill. It's a one time, it's one and done, and because of that, the language is, in my opinion, very flawed. I'll just say this, you're absolutely right, this money is earmarked for that. But I would argue they're also in session. I tried to contact KDHE directly. I did contact the chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee, Chairman Will Carpenter. And I happen to know somebody else who serves on that committee, I know him very well. It's my wife. But anyway, having said that, I don't think legislative intent was to tie our hands. Legislative intent was to provide some funding to a solution. This solution is so messed up, it is a, it is a, it barely does anything, in my opinion. It does something very good, but it's so lacking. It doesn't really solve any real problems. It's blood testing for a couple of years. By the way, they had, they raised a whole lot of money and spent just a small amount of that money already. If I understand right, again, Kansas Health Foundation is very generous. They provided the opportunity to provide some testing, they paid for it, but no one took advantage of it because I don't really know why. But I think, if I understand correctly, Kansas Health Foundation took the money back because it was, in their opinion, was a time limited, a time limited opportunity. This whole thing is really not just about blood testing, it's about taking care of people long term. And I think if you were to make an argument to this legislature, we appreciate the proviso, but we'd rather take the money and move it into a foundation level so we can take care of people forever. I think they'd be willing to listen to that. We're just going to run forward because we have a deadline, we want their money, we're going to run forward and then do the one thing that we can do according to a poorly written proviso. And I would much rather make an argument and say, hold up, let's take the same money and let's fix this in a much, much better way. This is, this is a lousy way to solve a problem. It doesn't really solve a problem, honestly. It just creates a tiny little opportunity for a few people for one time. It's just hugely lacking. So again, it doesn't cost the state any more money than it would have cost them anyway. Just use the money better. We're in session right now, where's our argument to the state legislature? We ought to be in front of the Human Health, Health and Human Services Committee this year, arguing for some permission to capture these funds and reuse them in a much better way. We need to try. But again, I'll support this because it's here, but I don't, I'm so disappointed, this is where we ended up. This is not good government. We're just throwing money at something that temporarily makes us feel better, but it's not really solving a problem. Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate the comments. Dr. Abloh, thank you. Very good. I would just remind everybody that we are responding to a proviso, that we didn't originate the proviso, we weren't in the room to craft the proviso, we weren't consulted on the proviso, we are responding to a proviso. And I agree largely with many of the things Commissioner Howell has said about, this can't stop here, that there's a broader conversation here. Part of the challenge is, is the way that we used to permit private wells is we have no idea how many wells are actually in Sedgwick County. And that's a real challenge when you think of 220 contamination sites throughout Sedgwick County, historically, the influence that wells have. So the responsibility here is human justice and taking care of people. And this MOA, although not perfect, because we didn't write it, we're doing the best we can to craft and shape this thing so that we can, we can create a system that will do the best we can with what's been provided for us. So with that being said, I appreciate the conversation, appreciate the questions, appreciate all the work. There's been some, appreciate the conversation with the governor's office, the state legislators involved, City of Wichita manager's office, council member Johnson in particular. I appreciate the management team here and the work we've done, Dr. Abloh, you in particular, and KHF, and with Ed O'Malley, and all the FQHCs. So this has been quite an effort just to get to this point, but we know we can't stop here. Okay? That being said, I will move to approve the staff recommendation action to approve the agreement and authorize the county manager to sign.
Second.
A motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluewall.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item M, elected row office pay.
Okay. While Sheena is coming down, I'll just say that commissioners, if you've got to run to the restroom real quick, because we've been going a bit a bit, if people see a commissioner step down, it's because we're, because I will be shortly. Instead of pausing, because we have to, we have things to do today, if you've got to get up and use the restroom, please do. So, Sheena, floor is yours.
Thank you. Sheena Schmitz, Chief Human Resources Officer. Excuse my voice, I'm getting over a cold. I have been asked to present this item today to approve a 5% salary increase for the elected row offices, specifically the Sedgwick County Clerk, Sedgwick County Treasurer, and the Sedgwick County Register of Deeds. This would be replacing this 3% that was approved effective December 29th. So again, the recommendation of a 5% backdating to December 29th, 2024.
Okay. Okay, Sheena, thank you. Commissioners, we've been briefed on this. Any questions or comment?
Questions?
Commissioner Howell?
Just a couple of quick questions. So the increase in salaries coming from, is it coming from property taxes or where's the source of the funds? Do we know?
General fund.
General fund, property tax dollars.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay. And then this resolution only gives them a change for this one year. It doesn't change the policy going forward. Am I right in saying it that way?
That's right.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I just want to be, the reason we're considering this today is because they requested the increase. Is that right?
I'll defer to the chairman. I didn't have those conversations.
Tom, go ahead.
That is correct.
I not have conversations with them independently or as a group either. I think you may approach a commissioner or... They did approach me late in 2024 and asked. Okay. So just to be clear, right now, the commissioners and the row offices are held at the 3%.
Correct.
Or less. If staff gets less than three, then we would all get less than three as well, but we're capped at 3%.
That's the policy today, yes.
That's the policy today.
Yeah.
Okay. So if I do my math correctly, each one of them gets about a $2,154 increase in their pay. That's that 2% if I do their math right. Collectively, it's $6,462. It's not a huge amount of money necessarily, it's just, it is something. I want to be very careful with property tax dollars. Another thing I'd say is, I'll just say this, that we commissioners, we get paid very well. I'm not complaining about our pay. I think we get paid extremely well. I'm not complaining at all. But our manager and his staff, we have, how many folks do you think in your umbrella that actually make north of six figures? I'd probably say...
Many.
Lots, right? Dozens, if not 50, or I have no idea, quite a few though. So the point, I guess the point I would make is like, for example, the governor of our state makes $110,000. There are people who are below the governor and make a lot more than that, for example. Commissioners make, we make very good salaries, it's around six figures, but we have lots and lots and lots of staff who actually are on the org chart below us, but they make a lot more money than we do. And that's okay. I think they should get paid well. And I want to make sure they get paid appropriately for what they do. I don't know that I agree that elected officials need to make more than their staff. I think elected officials are servants of the people. And they should make, again, they know what the salary is when they come into the job, they ran for the position. And so they understand their salary. They should be willing to work for that and continue to have that relationship with the people. If their staff makes more than that, that's okay. So I'll support this only because they requested it and they are elected officials. And it's only for one year. But I think we need to have a larger conversation about, by the way, their deputies, their deputies make substantially less than they do. I just want to make that point. They are the highest paid in their departments. And that's okay. But I don't know that I mind if their deputies made more than they do, that's okay with me as well. All right, thank you, Chairman.
Okay. And to be clear, it was referenced, I had a conversation in late '23 with the row offices, trying to understand the policy. The row, which is the county clerk, the register of deeds, and the treasurer's office, they were tied into, based on policy from the commission, tied into the same pay plan, not plan, but same pay...
Policy.
Policy as the commission. And there is discussion within that group of electeds that they don't, they don't think they should be tied to the commissioners. So the broader conversation on the policy will happen.
It's coming back.
Yeah. This was to try to get, and some of the concerns are somewhat of what Commissioner Howell references, compression with their deputies because they're running departments, they're running service departments. So it's a broader conversation we're going to have from a policy angle. That's a separate conversation that we'll be having, but this is just to get that, the three and two, so it'll be the same pay increase that their departments are having. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Three plus two, so five. Their departments are having that, and as heads of their department, they'll be receiving the same thing their departments are. Conversation on the policy will be ongoing. Oh, Commissioner Howell?
And just one more thing. And I think historically, the row office electeds have earned less than the commissioners for, generally speaking, they have earned less than the commissioners. And so, again, for last year or two, we've been equal, and now they're surpassing us. And so once this is done, it's going to be really hard to undo this today because they're actually surpassing the commission pay. Again, it's totally fine, it's their request, we should respect their offices, but they're surpassing us. They used to be paid less than commissioners, now they're going to be paid more than commissioners, which is okay. Just want to be clear, it's going to be difficult later on to address this in some way and kind of reverse this trend.
Yep. All right, thank you. There's a variety of different electeds in our organization. The sheriff makes considerably more than all of us, so does the district attorney. Those are electeds and they're running departments. And this is a policy conversation we need to have, but I think the very basic of it is it's valuing those electeds and their departments and their opinions as electeds. They're accountable to the people. So I'm encouraged and hopeful that we'll have a good, robust discussion on this, but this is a step to match what their departments are getting. That's the step here, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, I'll move to approve the staff recommended action and approve the pay adjustment.
Second.
Okay, motion, two seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluewall.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Sheena, thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item N, consideration of resolutions regarding quality of life spending by Sedgwick County Government in relation to sales tax dollars pointed to add for tax relief.
Mr. Thomas Henry, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thomas Henry, Assistant County Counselor. Before you today, you have two potential resolutions to consider regarding the quality of life spending by Sedgwick County Government. In both resolutions, quality of life spending is defined as discretionary spending on recreation and the enhancement of Sedgwick County residents' quality of life. And that's not for spending on things that would be considered core government or would otherwise be required by state law. This is spending on things like zoos, parks, and other quality of life draw type of things, museums as well. There are two specific carve-outs for this. First is economic development, the second is capital improvement spending. Neither of these would be considered part of quality of life spending under either resolution. And the first resolution has been before this board, or been before the Board of County Commissioners, previous member boards on a number of occasions. And the idea behind it is to limit the quality of life spending. It is tied to a sales tax dollar amount. We currently collect a, there's a countywide 1% sales tax, of which Sedgwick County receives a portion. Half of that is designated towards roads and bridges. That's not affected or addressed by these resolutions. The other half is pledged to spending on property tax relief. And what the first resolution would do is use that pledged amount for property tax relief as a cap. It would set that as a cap on the amount of quality of life spending that could be budgeted each year. And because of the timing of the collection of the sales tax dollars, that is done on a two-year lag. So for example, if we were looking at the 2025 budget, the sales tax pledged amount for property tax relief that we would be looking at would be from 2023. With this, because a sizable portion of the property tax dollars, or the dollars that are spent on quality of life spending currently are on employees' salaries and benefits for Sedgwick County employees, the, those individuals and those dollars would be assigned first prior to any additional spending, quality of life spending that would go to any organizations or not to employees of Sedgwick County. And kind of as an alternative, the second resolution, same definition of quality of of life spending, same carve-outs, there's nothing, nothing different in that regard. But it would, what it would call for, instead of setting a fixed cap, would be for, within the first quarter of the year, for there to be an open meeting where this commission would have an open discussion about what they want to spend on quality of life spending and determine at that point what they would be comfortable spending. It would not be limited to the pledged amount for property tax relief. And it could exceed that if that's what the will of the board is at that, that time. With that, the staff recommends that the board take action they deem necessary here. And I'll leave it to the commissioners who brought these resolutions forward to speak to their resolutions.
Okay. Wonderful. We have two different, and I think this is not always common here, but we have two different resolutions that are being discussed today. So Commissioner Howell or Meitzner, would either of you like to discuss the resolutions? Yeah? Commissioner Howell?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did this yesterday in staff meeting and I'll not, I hate to repeat myself, but for the public's sake, I need to go through this a little bit. So this is something I've been talking about for a number of years. It, it is born out of the discussion, the numerous discussions of talking to taxpayers in the community that are struggling to sustain their homes because of the continuing rising cost of property taxes. And the conversation generally goes like this, you know, we, we are very efficient. We don't waste your money. Your taxes go to co, to support core functions of government, things that you really desperately want us to provide, things like streets and bridges and public safety and 911 and, and all the things we provide in terms of adjudication of crime, for example. We are doing things that, that are really necessary to run good government in Sedgwick County. It's all really necessary spending. And the conversation tends to morph to things like, however, you also provide quite a bit of money to things like Exploration Place, Sedgwick County Zoo, and there's actually quite a few of those items on this list. The parks, Historical Museum, African American Museum, River Fest. It used to be, a long time ago, it was the Sports Commission, the Air Show, all kinds of things on this, put, you know, on this, on our, our history with lots of things like that, of taking portions of property tax dollars and funding those things. Now, I do know that we have a sales tax that was approved in 1985, that provides for the entire county about $140 million this year, of which we kept just under $40 million for Sedgwick County. Half of that revenue goes to roads and bridges intentionally, again, in use word for property tax relief. I'll argue that really, especially on the infrastructure side, that if it wasn't for the sales tax, we would actually take care of roads and bridges with property tax. So it truly is property tax relief. When you have revenue, it takes care of core functions of government. The sales tax was approved basically primarily for infrastructure and for property tax relief. So what happens is those sales tax dollars get mingled in our budgeting process. They go into the same bucket of money. We draw from that bucket for core functions of government, as well as things like these quality of life entities that we, we want to support. And so you might imagine that property owner saying, you know, I don't ever go to the zoo. I can't afford to go to the zoo. I'm struggling to put food on the table. I'm struggling to pay my electric bill. And we know that if they don't pay the property taxes, we eventually will take their house away from them. So it is a, it is a matter of property rights to have, to not overtax people on their homes to provide for things that we think are really, really important. But some of these things are, are obviously discretionary. They're not half to half things. They're, they're nice to have things. We want to have a Sedgwick County Zoo. We want, we want them to thrive. All I want to do is I want to connect the dollars for the purpose. So we know that sales taxes will cover quality of life with discretion. We will provide funding from the, from that source to those things. You know, sales taxes doesn't, this does not mean that sales taxes are dedicated to quality of life. It just simply says there's a cap. You're, you're going to run out of money. Keep spending that money out of the sales tax funds. There's a limit on what you can spend. It's 50% of the revenue. And so when you run out of money, you got to stop spending it. So you can't just say, well, we want to do something else with some quality of life thing in our community. We're going to go get some property tax dollars and fund those things because we want to. This would create a guardrail so that you can't, so that you cannot do that. So this just does two things. It creates a, a maximum amount of money that you can spend on, on quality of life things sourced from sales taxes. It also creates a prohibition from using property taxes for the very same things. So it just, it is just, it's philosophical. It's a guideline for us to live with on how we do our budgeting. This is not law, so it can be rescinded. It can be amended. It can be, it can be, it can actually be ignored if we needed to. I mean, I hate to use the word ignored, but there is a way for governing bodies to say, notwithstanding our intent to do this, we're not going to do that this time. I use the word, we should jump over the guardrail. And I would rather not do that. But it does, this does, this does provide the framework for us to say no. So when some entity comes and says, we've got a great idea. We want this many millions of dollars. And we have to go tap property tax dollars to make that happen. It gives us legitimate guardrails, says we really can't do that by policy. We don't have the money in our sales tax funds that are available to be spent that way. So this is a guardrail. It doesn't affect, it does not impact economic development. It does not, again, we can use the sales tax dollars to build a bridge. We can use sales tax dollars to replace a roof on an interest bank arena if we need to. Sales tax dollars have no limitation on how they can be spent. The only thing is you only have so many of the dollars that can, you can spend. And they can be spent on quality of life, but they can also be spent on things like 911. So it does not earmark those dollars specifically to quality of life. It simply gives us a limit on how much money can be spent on quality of life. It also does not hurt our employees. We have about, I think, 112.5 FTEs, full-time employees at Sedgwick County Zoo. Their salary can be paid for, actually will be paid for through sales tax funds. But if there's not enough revenue to pay those employees, we can go to property tax funds to pay them as well. So I don't know what the problem is with this resolution. It is more rigid than the other one. This one uses the word shall. It says that we shall not spend property tax dollars. So you'll have to go find the word in here. But it says, Section 2 says, quality of life spending each year shall not exceed the pledge amount. The word shall is, is a good word. It gives us a guideline. The other resolution doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't have that rigidity to it. It's much softer. It gives a, a discussion and the budget, a budget discussion and where we appropriate money in the budget process, like we do before now. Without the resolution, we already follow what the other resolution says to do. We're already doing that in our budgeting process. So it doesn't really create anything new, in my opinion. Whereas the resolution that I'm proposing today does create a structure for us to live with. And again, it doesn't mean it's perfect. It doesn't mean it can't be changed or, or even rescinded. But it gives us a guideline to the extent that it exists, gives us the right to say no. When I tell people in the legislature especially, we don't, we use property taxes. We don't waste them for, anything that's not core functions of government. They always come back and say, yes, but you did this, and you did this, and you did this. These are not core functions of government. And I don't have rebuttal, I don't have rebuttal to that. With this resolution, I can say that with a straight face and mean it. We're not going to waste property tax dollars. Not, we're going to spend property tax dollars on things that are not absolutely necessary in core functions of government. And that statement is what the people want. I've talked to a, a lot of people about this. And I have had incredible support for this resolution. And I think as we go to legislature and talk about property tax law in our state, this is imperative, it's imperative we pass this. And I think it's imperative we pass it today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner Howell, for explaining. I know for anybody that wants to dig deeper, they can watch the staff meeting of yesterday and have similar comments of what you just heard and similar comments of what I've, but I've looked at this more. The reason that I, I submitted this again was back in December. I wanted to know more information. And I've got about three reasons why I, I really question this. The first one is, is transparency. In this resolution, it's quoted, referenced Resolution 218, 1985, the 1985 references of vote. And also, whereas it, the board pledged in Resolution 167, 1985. I, I don't think that this, that this particular resolution is fully transparent. That resolution that was done in 1985, the full resolution says the first half of what's in Commissioner Howell's deal is correct. One half of the revenue received from its portion of said sales tax for ad verum tax relief. But the resolution says the word "and." "And" means the first part, but, but we fail to recognize "and" to pledge the remaining one-half of 1% to county road and bridge projects. It doesn't say any reference at all to quality of life at all in that resolution that was passed in '85. And similar to, I guess, more formally, if, as referenced earlier, it was stated by Commissioner Howell that we can change or rescind this proposal at any time. Sounds like we are changing or rescinding what was done in 1985 on that resolution. So I just want to be fully transparent. There's, there, after reviewing this, and then, of course, we talked yesterday about the additional, I'll use the word guardrails that are put on us that maybe question auditors and AAA bond. We're very proud of our AAA bonding that, that has been years and years of, of that responsible finance and accounting measures. This will add one more layer of, of auditors coming in asking, what's this about? And is it, does it work and keeps our AAA bond rating? I assume that our staff would be able to continue to, continue to document why it, it, it supports our AAA standing. But anyway, so the transparency of what's referenced in this is not fully transparent. It is half transparent to the actual resolution that was done in 1985. And so with that, I mean, this could almost be as simple as we just do one resolution that says, we will only use property tax for core services only and for any other previous votes by the citizens over the years that obligate this commission for, for services and leave it at that. If that's what we want to do, and we can make a new resolution that does not impact, or does impact, I guess, the previous resolution that was adopted by the board in 1985. So that's why I tried to do a easier one, or as the word's been used, a softer one. We just had a previous item on the row offices that's, that was quoted as say, well, once we do this, it's hard to undo. But in this case, the same theory would be, well, we can change or rescind at any time. So we should have said on the last motion that we should change or rescind at any time. It's not consistent with, with what we're doing here as the commission. And I, I'm sorry for our two new commissioners to, to hear this, a little bit of a debate. It's not necessarily a disagreement. It's respectful. I respect exactly what Commissioner Beatty and Commissioner Howell feel strongly about. And I agree that core services should be our main focus on all budgets, regardless of the source of the, of the revenue to pay for them. It, it does help to, to, I guess, separate those out in, in discussion. But, but the other fully transparent that the public should know is this item, if passed, which could be passed, it's, it's, it does not impact your, it will not impact your property tax bill that you are paying at all. It, it sounds directional and guardrails, but all the anxiety that, that you all have as citizens on your property tax bill that you get every year, if this was passed last year, your property tax bill this year would have been not one penny less. So that explains why I wrote a less controversial, in my opinion, and a easier one for the commissioners to start their budget process with saying this is our goal for, for the upcoming budget session. Mine says to start right at the beginning and give guidance. So that's my two cents worth. Sorry I'm taking a little longer to explain than I did yesterday. So.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you, Chairman Beatty. And I appreciate both Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Meitzner putting this together. You've got two new commissioners coming in here. And my opinion is, I've been through several budget cycles, but I've never been through it with the county. And we haven't even had our first budget retreat yet. I would like to, just from knowing each of you, and you know, we're only on week two here, but it seems like we're all kind of aligned with our spending and the core function of government. And I guess from my standpoint, I'd like to live through a budget cycle first, maybe revisit this next October, after we get our August budget approved and kind of we could do lessons learned and kind of see what directions we want to go with this governing body.
Commissioner Howell?
First, I want, thank you, Chairman. I want to just ask Commissioner Meitzner, if he's willing, if, if you're permissible, Chairman, to please explain, maybe in a different words, the issue of half transparent. I don't understand what that means. This is only half transparent and half not tran, I don't, I don't understand his comment on that. I need to.
To be exact, on your, on your, on the first one, um, oh, I'm sorry about that. One, two, three. On the third, whereas, that, that sentence is the first half correct of the resolution. It's not fully correct. It's half of the resolution. That's what I mean.
And you're, and you're referring to previous resolutions, like the 167 and the, 187 and 218? Or 167, I guess, 167 and 218?
Yeah. 167, 218 is the resolution that was done. And it says exactly what you say. But in the resolution, it says "and" to pledge the remaining one-half of 1% to county road and bridge projects. That's what I meant by it's half revealed.
Okay. And I guess in my understanding that, that again, road and bridge, road and bridge projects are in fact funded, if they're funded through sales tax, and they are partially, that is a property tax relief. So I guess I would ask Counselor, do you believe that my resolution is in conflict, conflict with the resolutions that he's referring to?
I do not believe so. I think that they can both work alongside one another and be consistent with one another for legal consideration.
I don't want to pull you into political debate, but do you believe there's some transparency concern about my resolution?
I, I, I don't know that I can speak to that. I think it's.
To me, I don't think it's, I don't think there's any intention to be non-transparent. I understand exactly what we passed in 1985. And I believe that the intent was, by this commission, that half that revenue would go to offset the, the cost on property tax dollars that takes care of road and bridge project, projects to the extent that revenue would do that. And the other half was property tax relief within our budget. It's mingled within the budget and does everything that property taxes do. There's no, there's no difference in the budget, in the bucket of money, whether it's sales tax or property tax sourced revenue. Those dollars are used the same. The question I have is, is if, if we were to use property tax dollars for, I don't know what the, what new, what example to use here. But if we were to use property tax, tax, tax dollars for those, some of those discretionary things, some people in our community do not support that. Because they don't participate in those things. They don't get the benefit of those things. You know, one, one great example is interest bank. I know people who voted for that, or maybe didn't even, didn't even vote for that, but have never been to an event downtown because they can't afford to go. So, you know, there's a cost to, to, to living in Sedgwick County. And, and again, the majority, that was a, that was a public vote. The majority made the decision in that case. But there's people out there that are, that have paid the cost, some, in some, some form or fashion, paid the cost for that, but have never been able to participate in the, in the benefit of having that in their community. There's people in our community that have never been to the zoo because they can't afford the ticket price. So, you know, when someone says, I can't pay my electric bill. I'm being threatened, you guys are threatening to take my house away. And it comes down to, we're taking your taxes because it's really, really, really important. I use the word precious. Your precious tax dollars are, are being used for core functions of government. And I, I hope you understand that, that I list all the things we do with their money. Most of that, no one questions. But they get to these items, people say, well, you know, I don't get to do those things because I can't, I can't participate. I don't have the extra money to go do those things. Yet they are subsidizing on behalf of other people who get to enjoy them. They're subsidizing through their precious property tax dollars. All I'm saying is, if we connect sales tax dollars to those things, it becomes a lot less offensive to those people. It becomes a much better argument in Topeka. I don't think this is about transparency at all. In fact, I think this is extremely transparent. I think it honors the will of the previous commissioners. It honors the will of the people that voted in 1985. In terms of hard to undo, let me just say this, it is hard to undo the salary you've given to someone else to lower their salary or to increase our salary in both cases is problematic. So that's the comment about it's hard, once you do this, it's hard to undo that. This resolution is actually not hard to undo at all. Three people, because they want to get rid of it, no problem. It's gone. It's very simple to undo. If this doesn't work out, we can get rid of it. It's, and if you think this is just semantics, and you think that doesn't do anything, then why, I don't know why you oppose it. If it doesn't do anything, why oppose it? Why delay it? I can tell you that the, the property tax discussion in Topeka has never been hotter than it is today. And I think we need something to make our, so again, waiting until October, in my opinion, doesn't do anything other than we ruin our, our, our appeal to Topeka to be thoughtful about how they're impacting what we do here. Because their presumption is we waste tax dollars on stuff that's discretionary. That's their premise. This puts that to bed. We need the argument on our side today. This puts a card in our hand. Today, we don't have that card. We're going to Topeka this afternoon to lobby our legislator, legislative friends this afternoon. I think all five of us are going. I would love to have this passed and say, guess what we did today? We don't waste property tax dollars on stuff that's discretionary. Now, I don't use the word waste. These things are very important to our community. These things are very important to our community. I hate to use the word waste, but you get my point. Don't parse my words here. They're very important. It's not waste in that regard, but property tax dollars are for something that's core functions, and that's what this is trying to do. It connects, it limits property tax dollars. It doesn't really limit sales tax dollars, only to the extent that there are some available. I really would implore us not to push this off. We really need to do this today. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wise.
Yeah, I want to thank both Commissioners Howell and Meitzner for putting these resolutions together. I think what we need to recognize here is we have five commissioners that, I think, agree on the concept of separating core functions from quality of life. I want to make sure that, you know, we talk about the quality of life assets that we have as a community and how important they are for our economic development, for the growth of our community, and the quality of life. So, I am encouraged that I think we're all agreeing that that's how we want to run this budget. I too, like Commissioner Bluebaugh, would like to go through a budget process. I like the directiveness of Commissioner Howell's resolution. I think that it's clear. I think the intent is clear, and it is all of the talking points that I was able to have as I campaigned for this position. I'm not sure I'm ready to make a motion, but I want to just make sure that that's clear, that I like this direction. I think that we all do, but perhaps we don't have the final version yet.
Okay. Very good. Appreciate it. I'll just make a comment, and then I'm going to actually turn it back over to Commissioner Bluebaugh, who I think I heard wants to make a motion. And it's historically, when we've had a commissioner that wants to make a motion for deferral, we've honored the motion and honored the request. So, and I appreciate two new commissioners here getting your feet under you. I would just say, I actually think this is a good thing, that there is discussions about property taxes happening publicly. I think it's a good thing that the conversation around the zoo and expiration place and Interest Bank Arena and other quality of life assets. I'm grateful that we're having these discussions about these organizations publicly. I think it's helpful. I'm listening to the plans, and I'm listening to, we believe that core services should be funded through property taxes, that there is a, not just a limitation of property taxes, but there's a specific role. We also see that there's other revenue streams where we can fund quality of life. I would agree that I think we're heading in a direction to where really the DNA of who we are and how we view property taxes is pretty, is being communicated publicly. I hear the Howell plan, and I hear guardrails. I hear the Meitzner plan. I hear flexibility of revenues, and, but what the underlying factor of all of that is, is that we believe property taxes has a specific role, and that sales taxes have another role in many regards with our quality of life. I would just say that I, this is a conversation, I've said this on multiple occasions, this is a principle for me. It's the first principle for me of the role of property taxes. I have no issues with memorializing it whatsoever. And for me, this conversation is a, is a longer conversation, and the first conversation I want to have about particularly the things that we value so highly in this community regarding the zoo and expiration place and these organizations. These are not mutually exclusive. Saying that property taxes shouldn't fund them does not mean they're not valued. In fact, I would contend that we need to continue to explore these opportunities down the road of more formulaic funding so that they're sustainable. I have a young family in this community. When we talk about attracting and retaining young families, the things that matter are public safety, affordability, housing, good schools and education, but also quality of life amenities. They matter. They matter a great deal. So, talking about property taxes in this way does not mean that we don't, that we don't value these things. In fact, I would say that the conversations that will be ongoing from this are going to be, how do we formulaically protect them and make sure that they're sustainable long-term? Because I don't think it's healthy for them to be on property taxes long-term. I don't think it is a reasonable expectation for them. So, I'm actually excited about the future conversations that are coming. I think this is step one of the future conversations. I'm happy to engage those conversations. We've done some big things before in this community. Interest Bank Arena is one of those examples, and I think we can do those things again. But we need to have plans, and we need to have an idea of what we're working through and value those things. So, again, I'm happy to memorialize this. I'm on the record of where my head's at on these things, but I also want to be very respectful of the process and the new commissioners. So, Commissioner Howell, then I'll go to you, Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Well, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, what I'm curious about is, if we wanted to delay this a week, a week or two to work on it, I think that's fine. I want to give the commissioners time to work it. We've been, we've been talking about this for years, for me. Some of us started working on this last year. We talked about it at length last fall. We had numerous staff meetings. We have numerous commission meetings. It's not a new topic. I'm not sure what the adversion is to push this off till October. If you want to push it off a week or two to make some minor changes to it and keep us on track and move it forward here in a week or two, that's totally fine. I would argue that February 5th would be a good date. October, if you want to do it October, then I would rather make a motion to approve this, and you guys can vote no. If you make a motion to defer this till October, I'll be making a substitute to pass this. I want a recorded vote today of who's where on this. I don't mind a delay of a couple of weeks, but I want to be on record that I'm pushing forward. So, as much as I want to give my colleagues support, you know, time to work out these issues, this is not complicated, and I think it's time for us to dissolve this one way or the other. You know, if we want a couple of weeks, that's fine. If you want to not support it, then just vote no. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank my fellow commissioners for putting the time and drafting this up and some guidelines, and I certainly appreciate it. But as I stated, I'm not going to be comfortable until I go through a complete budget cycle. I feel like our minds are like-minded here. I certainly hate to vote no against Commissioner Howell's, his resolution, but at the same time, there's some things in there. I've wrestled with this 1985 sales tax for years on the city council, and it does not say anything about quality of life. It says reduction in taxes, and it says road and bridges. So, I certainly don't want to disrespect the voters from 40 years ago. So, I want to make a motion to defer this item until October 1st of 2025, after we've been through a budget cycle.
I'd second that.
Okay. We have a, we have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Howell.
I don't know the purpose of delaying this that far. This is not that difficult, and I would rather see a recorded vote today. I'm torn between giving this till February the 5th versus today. Either way, it's probably going to fail, but how do you refer to these resolutions as, which one is which? How do you have the...
Personally, I refer to them as the Howell-Meitzner resolution. So, if you want to propose adoption of the resolution that you brought forth, I think that would be sufficient.
And if there's no willpower to do this on February the 5th, then obviously the point of delaying this till February the 5th. Sounds like there's nobody interested in working on it right now, so it's either October or nothing, or today. So, I'll make a motion that we would approve the Howell resolution. It's listed on page 88 of my book, page 88 and 89. I would move my motion.
Okay. I'm going to pause for a second, make a clarifying statement, is, I'm supportive of the Howell resolution, very supportive of the Howell resolution. Said this publicly, I voted for it the first time, that it failed. I understand his resolve in this. I agree with your resolve in this. I think this is very, very important for a lot of reasons. So, I publicly, I support the Howell resolution, and I know that doesn't, not everybody agrees with me on that, and not everybody likes that, but I do, for the principles that I listed previously.
And it's a substitute, I should have said it's a...
It's a substitute motion. Yes, correct. I also want to very much honor my colleagues here, and historically, when we have, when a commissioner has asked for a motion of deferral to get more information, to make a vote, the history here, as we've tried to honor that, and I want to honor that. So, I will publicly say I support his motion, even though I'm not going to second it, because I know there's a motion of deferral on the table, and I want to make sure I honor my colleagues in that regard. So, this conversation is not going away, though. I don't want anybody with any assumption thinking that this is going away, because this is something that's very, very important for this community, and I want to make sure everybody feels comfortable in the direction that we're going. So, there's a substitute motion on the table. Is there a second? Okay, the motion fails for lack of a second, going back to Commissioner Bluebaugh's motion of deferral. And there is a second. Can you, Clerk, is there, or Justin, is there a clarity on a timeframe, or is it just an indefinite deferral?
He said October 1st.
Wednesday, October 1st.
And that is a Wednesday, so that would be regular BOCC meeting.
Okay. Understood. Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. This motion, these resolutions will be deferred. We'll take up this conversation, please, in the budget hearing. Let's make sure we're still digging in, and we'll continue these conversations. Very important. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item O, Report of the Bids, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting, January 16, 2025.
Joe, you don't have to run down for this one.
That's right. I had a nice time to relax and catch my breath. For the record, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 16th. We have two items that we are seeking your approval. First one is the Security Patch and Asset Management Solution for the Division of Information Technology. That recommendation is to utilize the inter-local purchasing system contract, which is number 230105, and it's with White Rock Cybersecurity in the amount of $107,400, and it covers a period of 36 months, which starts March 10, 2025, and goes through March 9, 2028. And our final item is the ARC GIS Product Maintenance for 2025, again, for the Division of Information Technology, and recommendation is to accept the quote from ESRI Incorporated. They're doing business as Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $52,990. So, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Commissioners, two items on the bid board. Any questions or comments for Joe? Okay. Seeing none, I'll move to approve staff recommended action and approve the recommendations of the Board of Bid and Contracts.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Joe, thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Manager Stolz.
Afternoon, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items P through Z on regular agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, we've had some dialogue and briefings on the items on the consent agenda. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Okay. I'll move to approve consent agenda items P through Z.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Okay. Ms. Tanya Cole. This time of year, when we're in the legislative session is going, and we're contending for things that impact Central County, we hear from Tanya Cole every week. So, legislative issues.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. So, for legislative update this week, I will mention that this is the second week of the legislative session, so I have some dates to go over. Next Tuesday will mark the last day for individuals to request member-sponsored bill drafts. February 5th will be the last day for individuals to introduce bills, and February 17th will mark the last day for non-exempt committees to introduce bills. And then Turnaround Day will be scheduled for February 20th, and at that point, non-exempt bills that have not passed their chamber of origin will be considered dead. We talked about bills that we wanted to prioritize at Agenda Review last Friday, and those were sent up to our lobbyists on Monday, so they will get those to the reviser's office, and we'll wait to hear the status of those bills and be prepared to follow those through as those bills hopefully make progress. I think I mentioned at Agenda Review, every Monday, we hear from Watkins Public Strategies. They send us a report that I forwarded on to you. I also send that to county leadership, and they also send us a bill tracker for those bills that we want to pay attention to in local government. So, we'll get that forwarded on to you. We did have a call with them on Monday. They are paying very close attention to the Senate Concurrent Resolution 1603. I think you're all familiar with that. That's the bill that would limit residential, commercial, agricultural, and utility classes to a 3% cap increase on real property tax valuation. What they did mention, and it was also in their newsletter, that the Senate Committee, of course, favors the measure because of the property tax relief. They're going to work that bill. They worked it yesterday, I believe, but they did share that the House does share concerns on this, following what they heard from the opponents on this. That include the tax shift burden to businesses, as well as what they're hearing, and that's the housing market stagnation from that. On the newsletter, there were some bills that I'm kind of paying close attention to that were related to county clerk, 911, elections, and then planning. So, made sure that those departments that are involved, the division heads, have the information on that. There's a couple of things today that we may require some action from the commission. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Howell on this. He's been working with stakeholders on enhancement of Senate Bill 367, and I know that he heard from Representative Lewis on maybe some potential legislation that we would want to be involved with and lead. So, in a minute here, I'm going to ask that Commissioner Howell kind of speak to that. And then just this morning, I sent an email via Christie is putting in some support testimony, asking for supplemental allocation to support mental health crisis inpatient beds. And if you recall, that is on our legislative platform to, again, also support mental health crisis inpatient beds. So, I don't know if that's something that we also want to put in support testimony for that. I've included via Christie's testimony in the email, so that's something I just wanted to mention this morning. So, I may just kind of hand this over to Commissioner Howell and for him to speak on that Senate Bill 367.
Yeah, certainly. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tanya, for the update. And so, Representative Bob Lewis is the Chair of the Committee that will deal with juvenile corrections, and he did attend a roundtable discussion, I think it was January the 7th, I believe it was a Friday, and he did attend. He came in from Goodland just to be with us that day. He spent about four hours here. He is new to this committee, but he cares deeply about the topic. We had about five actual items that came out of that, out of that roundtable discussion. One of those is, has become obvious that according to the consequences of Senate Bill 367, again, when we use that term, we're referring to the legacy legislation that was passed in 2016 by Representative Jennings and Blaine Finch. And one of the things that legislation did was a total rewrite of the juvenile corrections laws of our state, how we handle our juvenile offenders. And as a consequence of that, we have had law enforcement and district attorneys and really our corrections staff has been unable to do some of the things that are necessary to provide real help for these kids. One of the things that became really obvious in that roundtable discussion, we've known about this for a while, but it was articulated very eloquently by people in the room, including Bob Lewis, that one thing we're lacking right now is juvenile offender beds in our state. Again, to understand, we have JDF, which is detention. We have YRC-2s that are SINK, Children in Need of Care, based YRC-2 homes, group homes. We obviously have foster care that are, you know, we have Amber Hope, another foster care across our state. It tries to place foster kids. These are kids that don't have parents, they're neglected and abused children, taken from their parents because of home situations. These kids are needing to have temporary placements. Unfortunately, the 367 has, has become unable to handle a lot of these juvenile offender children that are not convicted of crimes. They don't go to Topeka Children's Prison there in Topeka, but they're trying to, we try to manage them in our own system here. Many of these kids end up with motions for adult prosecution because they don't have a system, and the juvenile corrections can't handle some of these, some of the crimes these kids, these kids commit. A lot of these kids don't ever, don't ever get charged with anything at all, because there's really not a great way to seek a conviction or any type of punishment for a child that's committed these crimes. The system is hugely lacking, and again, it was probably 60, 75% positive and good, but the consequences of this law have been dire. And we've had a lot of really difficult situations in our state, and especially in Central County. We don't have the resources to deal with kids without some type of group home option, much like Judge Earl Boys Ranch. And I say that because that Boys Ranch was, was shut down by the county and ultimately was demolished and is turned back into park property. It's about the same time, the YRC-2s for juvenile offenders across our entire state have been shut down by that law. The law basically eliminated all juvenile offender beds, group home beds in the entire state of Kansas. So what's happening now is we're using the foster care system and DCF to place these juvenile offenders in foster care, in foster care settings, as well as YRC-2 group homes with SINK children. It's a mess. And so we identified this as the problem. One of the problems needs to be addressed with legislation going forward. We don't want to return our state back to where we were, where we over-incarcerate children, where we, where we have too many people getting services that frankly may not be justified. But we do need some beds, and that's what this bill, that's what this bill needs to address, is the state needs to be invested to provide some placement beds for some JO kids. And so the legislation that Bob Lewis is asking for, we need to help write and help present very quickly, would be to get juvenile offender beds, YRC-2s, group homes created in Kansas, and it should be based on case count. So the location of these resources needs to be based on case numbers, and the number of those beds needs to be based on case numbers judiciously. But right now, we, right now, we have zero. We need some. Okay? Zero's not the right number. 50 is probably not the right number. Rather than coming up with a number, I'd rather that the cases determine our amount of resources in each county or where they would be placed in the state of Kansas. Right now, for kids that are, that are so difficult, that are JO kids, there is not a single bed in Kansas for these kids. If we do anything at all, if they have to find a bed, seek a bed, sometimes it's actually out of state. So when you take a kid out of that environment, away from everybody that they know, these are not kids without parents. They have parents, but their situation is very dire, and take them away from their family that they know, their aunts and uncles, and grandmas and grandpas, and moms and dads, and ship them out of state, because we have no other resources. It's just not good government. So what I need to do right now is I need the support of this commission, and our counselor's office, and our corrections staff to suggest some right language to our reviser. I have a reviser that's been assigned to this project by Representative Bob Lewis, the chairman of this committee. He's requested that the legislation be introduced as quickly as possible, and he wants to have a hearing on that bill. He also talked about doing two days' worth of group home educational hearings in his committee. So we will have to support that. He does want our corrections staff to appear and provide testimony, as well as myself. And so we will be working on getting those scheduled, but in the meantime, the legislation is urgent, and we need to have, meet with the reviser as soon as possible and get something introduced into that committee, ideally even this week, if not early next week. Thank you, thank you, Tanya, for the chance to speak.
That's all I had, Commissioner and Chairman. The only other thing I would mention, and Commissioner Howell mentioned it earlier, that we do have a reception this evening with South Central delegation to discuss the joint legislative platform, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to talk about our platform as well.
Yeah, okay. The Senate Bill 367 discussion, something I'm very supportive of, something Commissioner Howell took the lead and brought a lot of people into the room to collaborate multiple times, multiple years it's happened. Is there some action you need from the board in this? Commissioner Howell had made mention.
Well, it's hard to do this under coma, because we can't meet to discuss the details here. I guess I would ask for your support, knowing that I'm working with a reviser to get legislation drafted and hopefully introduced very quickly. So between now and our next meeting is two weeks from now. We don't really have time to come together and chew the details of this legislation. It can always be addressed through testimony and through the committee process. I would recommend we get something in bill draft form and get it introduced, even if it's not perfect. I would just say, we've got to lean forward, and I would ask for your trust and your support to authorize me to represent this commission to get this legislation moving forward.
Okay. And this one in particular, Senate Bill 367. I've been in the room. I know the specific things that we'll be asking for, and you'll be asking for. I'm supportive of them. I have no qualms with that whatsoever. This is not part of our legislative platform or agenda. This is a specific commissioner, plural, that see this as a challenge, and it's going to try to grapple this on our own. So without any objection, I have no problem with encouraging Commissioner Howell to continue to work with the reviser, and I'm very much supportive of the things he's advocating for.
With your permission, then, Chairman, I will keep you guys informed on the status through staff. I'll let you guys know every turn of the, if there's any concerns, please work through staff to get those concerns addressed. And I just want to say, as I wrap this up, you might say, well, this isn't a county commission issue. This isn't a county government issue. It is a huge county government issue. This impacts our citizens in unbelievable ways, as well as tax dollar spending on juvenile corrections, where we provide services to our kids. But we also have a court that are clogged up. We have judges that are frustrated. We have DA, the kid doesn't know what to do because he can't, he can't pursue remedy through the court because he's been hamstrung through this previous law. If you don't think this is a county commission government issue, you don't understand the issue. And I just want to tell you, if you want to know more, please reach out to me. I'd love to come and talk to your group and ask for your support. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Looks as if we have consensus on this move, so. Okay. Tanya, anything else?
The only other item I was mentioning was the support testimony on the House Social Services Budget Committee for the Support for the Mental Health Crisis inpatient Beds. If we want to put in testimony for support of that, you have an email in your inbox, so I can always just come back around and follow up.
Why don't we do that? Maybe two, two ones might be necessary, and if we can formalize a letter and whatever's needed, so we can move that. Appreciate the flexibility. Appreciate all the work you do on this.
Yep. Thank you so much.
Okay.
And just a shout out to Legal, because they did put those bills together that we did get to Watkins Public.
A shout out to Legal, indeed.
And I would note, it was a team of assistant county counselors, Kevin Stamper, Armon Chukaiav, Tom Henry, who crafted all those bills. It wasn't me. Thank you, Joe.
Tom's been busy today. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tanya. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee report.
Okay. Commissioners, anything for committee reports? I would just say, every year in January, we start looking at the committees that commissioners are on. What we'll start doing now is having conversations about committee assignments. So I obviously have two new commissioners with committees that they'll be going on. So those things are happening now. Hopefully, we'll have a list and some movement on that here in the next couple of weeks, and after lots of discussions with each of the commissioners, so. Okay. Anything else? Next item, please.
Other.
Do we have anything under other? Got Commissioner Bluebaugh, whose light we will get fixed.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I just want to take a moment to put out my thoughts and prayers to the family of Paul Davis. Paul kind of chaired this South Business Association that Commissioner Howell and I've been a part of for several years. Dale Carter was on there before, and he kind of chaired it. And I know his wife passed away a few years ago, and he passed away between the holidays. And just, just wanted to say, you know, thank you for everything he did. He participated on the District Advisory Board. He was, you know, there at our meetings every month, and really tried to do a lot for South Side businesses and to, you know, keep the conversation going. So I don't know if Commissioner Howell has any comments he wants to make, but.
You know, it's interesting that, thank you for the recognition to Paul Davis. He's been involved in a number of boards. He actually served on the Drainage District as an elected official. He's a precinct committee person. He's very politically active. He had a very successful business. He was also engaged in South Wichita business, which is, again, a huge need. We want people to be focused on South Wichita business, and he was really focused on that. So I appreciate his leadership. He went through a surgery similar to mine, about a week after mine, and unfortunately, we compared notes on recovery discussion, and I was just shocked, honestly, to learn of his passing, because I just talked with him. And so this is a huge loss to our community, a huge loss to me personally. Sad to see his passing. You know, he's an interesting person. He actually came in here a number of times. He actually had a property rights case a couple of years ago. He still hasn't forgiven me for voting in a way he didn't appreciate, but I just want to say, I do love him and love his, love his impact on our community, and I'm sorry to see him gone.
Very kind, very kind. Paul was actually at SCAC meetings quite a bit. I mean, he's very active, very involved. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Meister.
Yeah, just a quick comment that I know we had a rather lengthy meeting today and a robust discussion about the sales tax deal, and I know there's effort to try to get something done immediately and something done October 1st. And I will, I really reflect, you know, I want to try to work with Legal and see if maybe I can help propose something that might be acceptable to, especially the new commissioners that I totally respect. They want to go through a budget season, and if a couple of changes would be satisfactory to all parties, then we can, we can bring this up again in a, in a near-future commission meeting, and, but also respect the vote that we just made on the, on the October 1st. So, but I will obligate to try to see if I can get to a resolution. So, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Appreciate that. Okay. Anything else under other? Okay, seeing none. Next item.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session today, so we are done 12:19 PM. A lot of good, robust discussion today. Appreciate everybody's insight and feedback. Thank you to the public. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.